Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, June 15, 2021. Let me go through a couple of housekeeping items and some announcements. Everyone that will address the board, please make sure the microphone is turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Please also make sure that applicants and speaking members of the public identify themselves for the record when they speak. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for July 6, 2021, at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton room. Let's see, it seems like there's not much to do now that I don't have to read that long script about Zoom meetings. Nelson will appoint you in to a voting position in Lynn's place for tonight's meeting so that we've got four voting members. Neil will join us in a little bit and then we'll have five. That is all that's listed on the call to order items. The next item is our planning and zoning administrators' report. Casey, do you have anything for us?
The only thing I have for you is our regional impact recommendation memo that's in your packets. We recommend to staff that the Flatley Warehouse Distribution Project and the LMS New Hampshire Site Plan Project are both not of regional impact.
Thank you, Casey. What's the will of the board with respect to those two recommendations that projects on our agenda tonight are not of regional impact? Nelson?
I will make the motion, but I really didn't hear everything that Casey said. I was kind of distracted by a newcomer here.
No problem. So we'll repeat what she said here in a second briefly, but we've got you for a motion. Who will second that motion? Second by Barbara. So what Casey said was just a recommendation that the Flatley Warehouse and the LMS project are not of regional impact.
Oh, I see. I thought we had already voted on that years ago, but okay.
The warehouse project is a new site plan for tonight, so. With that in mind, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to determine those projects are not of regional impact. Anything else, Casey?
Nope, that is all.
Do any members of the board have any questions for the staff? Seeing none, then we move on to item three on our agenda. Item three is the John Flatley Company as the applicant and owner. Its continued review for consideration of a site plan to construct 100,000 square feet of research and development and warehouse space in three proposed buildings and associated site improvements per the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcel is located at 685 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial District and the Aquifer Conservation and Wellhead Protection Areas. It is Tax Map 6E Lot 3-4. It is also case number Planning Board 2020-19. It is continued from the September 1, October 6, October 20, November 10, 2020 meetings, and the January 5, May 4, and June 1, 2021 Planning Board meetings. With that in mind, before I turn over the gavel, I will recuse myself and from this project, as I do with all of the ones involving this property, and ask our esteemed vice chair to take over the conduct of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, since the last meeting, all of the members have received, I believe, the materials that staff has sent out. That should have included the traffic report, the peer review comments by Fussin' O'Neal, and also earlier today, Tim should have sent out the separate letter from November 4 regarding the Fussin' O'Neal comments on the traffic report. Did everybody receive those? Okay, so, we have the applicant here. Mr. Brandon, it's good to see you again. If you could just want to, just for the record, introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants, representing the John J. Flatley Company. With me tonight from the John J. Flatley Company is Kevin Walker, and then we also have Giles Hamm here this evening with Vanessa and Associates, who's the traffic engineer for the project. As you may recall, Mr. Chairman, we were last before you, I think, on June 1. At that meeting, we presented the project. We went through what we considered all of the outstanding items. The board did act on both of our waiver requests, and then the meeting concluded with some questions relative to traffic, which is why we have Mr. Hamm here this evening. But we don't have anything new necessarily to present. I will share that we have had communications with Merrimack Village District. That was a concern that was also raised kind of at the end of the meeting, and it's my understanding that that process is, has started. We have provided water design flows, and I know they're working through, I believe, the development agreement at this time, but Mr. Walker may be able to speak to that in more detail as well. So.
Sure.
Hello?
Hey, Tim?
Yeah?
It's Justin over at Tim Hall. How are you?
Good, thanks, Justin.
We're jumping right into the Flatley project here, so you are going to be online. If you need to mute, that's going to be on your end, all right?
No problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Tim, for joining us. Continue, Mr. Brandon.
Sure. Good evening. Tim, we just kind of gave a brief summary of where we left off at the last meeting, and I was just getting ready to say that we have no objections, as we did at the last meeting, with any of staff's recommendations or recommended conditions of approval. We have no issues or concerns with any of the outstanding comments from Fussin' O'Neal, and that really pertains to site comments as well as traffic comments, but I'll let Mr. Hamm address that if the board has any questions with that. So that's really all we have for this evening, but we are here to certainly try to answer any questions that the board may have at this time, and I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Walker. Board members, before we jump into the traffic, which I did have a couple of questions on, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brandon himself regarding the project?
Well, I have a lot of questions when we get into it.
Absolutely.
As far as the traffic is concerned, the other question while we're here, I thought one of the things we were going to see was some of the soils data, and we did get a little memo on the soils data that said some things about the number of tests they did, but it doesn't give any data on what was discovered in those probes. Barbara, I think you had requested that, and I was looking forward to seeing it, but I didn't see it in the material that we were distributed to, or that was distributed to us, I should say.
I know that I did have questions on that. I think we eventually came to the fact that we don't have, I would say, authority over that. It was a point of curiosity. Mr. Brandon, if you could touch upon that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let Kevin touch on, you know, the soil borings, but I can tell you that the stormwater management report that was submitted for this project does consist of a number of test pits that were executed on the site. We touched on that, you know, in a number of our meetings relative to the design not encountering groundwater and that, you know, us meeting all local and state criteria. That was really a big topic for this project as we started. If you may recall, we initially submitted this application seeking a waiver from the local stormwater requirements, but after, you know, working collaboratively with, at least in my opinion, staff and departments and DES, we were able to come up with a solution and a design that ultimately meets local and state standards, but part of that design did consist of a number of test pits being performed on site, witnessed and observed by our soil scientists, and those logs have been provided. But I think the information that you may be seeking is something that Mr. Walker can talk to, speak to, and that's really the soil testing as it pertains to the ongoing PFAS information. So I'll let him address that.
And Paul, I think Tim wants to step in to speak to this as well.
Go ahead. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Paul. Just to refresh the board as to what was requested regarding the soil testing information, I was at the meeting two weeks ago. The information requested was an update as to the status of where that sat with NHDES, and I believe Mr. Walker provided that within the next day or two, which was then forwarded out to the board. So the information regarding the specifics of that soil testing, as was mentioned, is not really under the planning board's jurisdiction. We don't have any regulations or requirements that could have any effect on that. It was simply just a request to see where things stood with DES.
Thank you, Tim. Excuse me, sorry. Mr. Brandon, if you would like, Mr. Walker to come up and answer any questions that other members would have regarding that.
Certainly, thank you.
If you give us a brief rundown as to what we started speaking of last meeting.
Sure, yeah. Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. I think Tim kind of hit it on the head there. We were asked, you know, where does it stand, basically? I remember the last meeting, I said DES has kind of run a little behind due to staff and issues and obviously other issues going on, but all the testing was done. It was submitted to DES. DES has that in their one-stop system, and at this point, it's just a matter of them taking it, reviewing it. We've also submitted a work plan, which was almost identical to what we had to submit for the apartment site. Basically says if we intercept groundwater at any point, whether it's foundations or utilities or whatever, we have to pull an additional permit from DES for de-watering the site and treating that water before putting it back into the ground where it's coming from. Nothing would be brought off-site, whether it's water or soils or whatever, but the bottom line is on the site, we don't expect to hit any groundwater with either the foundations nor the utilities. There are portions behind St. Cobain that we will most likely hit some water once that project gets underway, and that's more for the St. Cobain project itself. Their relocation of their utility lines, not so much any design we'll have to do, but upfront here, that's what's going on. We're just waiting on some sign-off from DES.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Nelson, did you have any more questions?
Well, no, I just had expected to see some more information about it, but as Tim points out, I guess we don't have jurisdiction. It was a matter of what's going on there that we were interested in, and I think that Barbara was interested in too, but.
We've got no problem once, so DES has to accept the filing, review the filing, all that stuff, and that's what the process they're under right now. We've got no problem forwarding that or giving you the access through DES to see that information once they've, you know, made it official, I guess.
Yeah, well, okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haley, do you have a question?
Yes, just as with the original building that went on for Gilbert Crossing, the town will need to be alerted as to the components of the AOT once it's rendered to you so that the town is aware of the restrictions placed on the site.
Right.
Just in case anything is new.
Yep, not a problem.
Seeing how you're a little closer to the action.
Lucky, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Haley. Any other members of the board have any other questions towards Mr. Walker?
More on traffic.
That's what I'm saying. We'll move on to that next.
Yeah.
If you want to introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, good evening, Giles Hamm with Vanessa and Associates.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, if you want to start us off or?
No, I'd like to hear from him first, I think.
Well, I'll just give a brief summary. I think you have all the information, so we had completed a kind of a short traffic analysis and provided that to the board back in 2020. Within that memo, we looked at a comparison of the retail component that was part of the master plan and compared that to traffic of the industrial use, and obviously it's much less traffic than retail. Also, within that memo, we looked at speed studies on the corridor, we looked at site It showed you the traffic generation of the industrial use and then made recommendations to accommodate the project. The town had hired Fussin' O'Neal Review Consultant. They reviewed our information. Quite frankly, they concurred and accepted our information. They made a series of five recommendations, mostly regard to site-related issues and sidewalks and issues like that, and we've agreed to provide, include all those recommendations within the framework of the work. And really, I guess, so DW Highways, we know, is under state jurisdiction, so we need to work with the state to get a driveway permit, and we need to, I think you know the area, there's a northbound left-turn lane, so we're going to take that center striping and work with the state and convert that into a left-turn lane into this site. The driveway has adequate site distances based upon the speeds that are out there, so we think it's a safe project as planned, and again, there'll be less traffic from this use as compared to the master plan retail component. And that's kind of a brief synopsis, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just to touch on one of the points that I also saw, the Fussin' O'Neal comments said that they would recommend large truck traffic be forwarded to the main entrance by St. Cobain.
And that makes sense. We agree with that. I mean, it makes sense as a signal there. It's much easier to get in and out and make those turns, and that makes sense, and we don't have any problem with that.
Okay. Nelson, did you have a?
Okay.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
I'll go. I was kind of disappointed in the traffic report because it didn't do a couple, it did a couple of things I think need to be looked at. One is, they used as a baseline the original CUP study that was an overall view, but not a specific look at this particular development. I found that there was no mentions of the level of service that will be available at either of these entrances, especially the entrance that's opposite the housing development across the street. I forgot the name of the street, but that intersection, there's no level of service information there, and we know from our own experience that things have changed a lot since August. I think it was August that the traffic, background traffic was tested and looked at, and that was about the low point of traffic on that highway compared to prior to the COVID events and probably prior to today, too, because our own experience shows, and I think we've gotten testimony from many of the butters regarding the quantity of traffic that's on that road now as compared to what it was in August. And I think I agree with that observation, and I would like to see more done against the traffic that's there today, and that's a concern to me.
Paul, Tim would like to chime in.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. A couple of things regarding the information in the traffic study. Number one, the regulations that we adopted in 2019 specify the level of traffic study required for an individual site plan. This particular project met the requirement for a short analysis, so that's why you don't find level of service analysis and other information that Nelson was just chatting about. The other thing I want to make extremely clear, and I think Giles can probably concur with this, the information that was measured in August was not traffic counts or background traffic. It was simply a measure of what the speeds were of the vehicles that were traveling in the corridor at that time. A short traffic analysis does not require updated counts to be taken as part of the analysis. It only is necessary to provide ITE chip generation and distribution information per the requirements of the regulations.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, well, I think our requirements fall short then of what we need in a case like this. This is a large development with possibly a lot more traffic being added into the corridor, and.
I hate to disagree with you, Nelson, but I'm going to. The peak hour traffic that's expected from this proposed use at both driveways, so this is going to be split, is 71 trips in the morning and 64 trips in the evening. This is compared to what could have been, and again, my comment in the staff memo is that the analysis needs to be updated because they can't take credit for the retail use that was never constructed. But again, had the retail been constructed, we were talking about over 500 trips during the Saturday peak and the evening peak during weekdays. So this is a significantly less impactful traffic study, or excuse me, significantly reduced traffic impact from these uses than what was contemplated and reviewed in a full analysis with the state when the conditional use permit was originally approved.
Well, you say a full analysis with the state, but the state never, I've never seen any analysis that the state did on.
This goes back to when the original mixed-use conditional use permit was approved by the board several years ago. There was a full-blown, full-traffic analysis that was done at that time, and at that time, both the planning board, peer review, and the state reviewed that information, and from that traffic study, that's why the individual driveway locations throughout the mixed-use project were selected, because those were the areas that the state essentially told the applicants, those were your driveways are going to go.
Well, I don't recall that. I don't see the background data that I would expect to see with a project like this. I just.
And again, because this individual site plan for this simple, single use on this single lot did not meet the threshold to require a full traffic analysis, given the relatively low number of trips that are generated by an industrial use versus another more intense land use like retail.
If I can add some information to be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Brandon, go ahead.
So, I think as Mr. Thompson indicated, we've provided the information that's required by the town, but we still have to go through the state process, so we're, even after this step, there's more work to be done, and some of the questions that are raised here, we'll be answering with the state. The state's just not going to let us build a driveway, so we'll have to provide them additional technical information. They'll want to know traffic information in terms of what's the length of that southbound left-turn lane needs to be. So we will be providing more information to the states as we go through that process, and I think those answers will be addressed by the state. They're just not going to let us build, and they're going to make sure it's safe. Again, we have, we know the speeds, we know the sites, since it's a safe driveway, and these locations have been planned. Goes back to, I think, 2014, the study. And also keep in mind, traffic levels now still aren't where they were pre-pandemic, so they're still lower than they were, and even goes back to the 2014 numbers, they're around that level. So we have more work to do. It's going to be a safe plan. It's going to be safe. The state will require that of us, and it makes sense that we have a connection to the signal, so if you're having difficulty turning left out during the peak hour, which you will, you have the option of using the signal as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Barbara, you said you had a question?
Actually, I have a couple of comments and then a question.
Go ahead.
I think Mr. Thompson mentioned that the study was done during peak hours. I don't think 1:45 in the afternoon constitutes peak hours, does it?
No, no, the peak hours out there are around 7:00 to 8:00, and I think around 4:35.
And yet, the study states that the data was collected at 1:45.
That may be when speeds were done, in terms of looking at speed studies.
It was, and it was fairly low volume.
Right, but if you think about, if you think about that corridor, when are you going to have the highest speeds? It's not going to be at 5:00 or 7:00 when it's congested. The higher speeds, which is a more conservative analysis.
So really, they were just looking to see how fast the traffic was moving on it versus what the volume was and that type of thing.
Yeah, that's all that was, and we would typically do speeds off-peak, again, they're higher, and they were, I think, between 42 and 44 miles an hour, with the speed limit being 45. But again, when we design a driveway, when we're looking at what's safe in terms of sites, we're looking at those higher speeds, not the speed limit.
Sure, and at some point, does the number of bays in the loading dock, the loading zone, make a difference as well? Because it looks like the plans have approximately 17 loading bays, so when you, you know, forward and calculate the number of semis that might be going into there fully loaded, that would be a fairly heavy number as well in that very congested area.
So our, so the volumes are based upon studies that have been done at similar-type developments, and so we have the square footage, so it's based on that. I would tell you, in my experience, probably 17 bays is probably a lower number than could be in other industrial developments.
But remember, this is also residential as well, it's used mixed, so right across the street, we have a fairly large development, and there's residential housing all along that area, so that's not usual for an industrial area.
And I think, again, the truck traffic, as was recommended by Fussin' O'Neal, would use, would use a signalized driveway to get it out, and again, the level of traffic that we're talking about here doesn't meet the threshold of a, you know, significant traffic study. We've met the requirement, and your consultants reviewed that information and accepted it as correct.
And that was based on the fact that at the time, the retail had been removed from the overall plan, but I don't know if you know that they're planning on adding 92 apartment units, so add two cars per unit possibly, that's 184 cars. So that does change the picture a little bit going forward as that part of the project becomes reality as well.
Right, and I think that, you know, Fussin' O'Neal and this board was focused on what the proposal is in front of us, is this project at light industrial at 101,000 square feet.
But it's changed, yeah.
And we're aware of other stuff's happening on this development parcels, as well as other stuff's happening on the corridor and outside this community, quite frankly.
So at what point in time we would be taking into consideration the 92 apartment units and the traffic that that, the traffic load that brings to the entire area?
Well, I think that's been in front of the board, and we'll be back in front of the board again as a separate application, but in terms of the information the state will ask us to do is they'll ask us to look at the corridor, look at the development that's happening in the area, including that development, and have us look at how this intersection's going to operate and how we're going to size the left-turn lane and the operations there. So it'll be looked at, we know that. Okay?
Thank you.
Barbara, just to jump in, if I'm, if, Tim can correct me if I'm incorrect, but once the 92 apartment buildings, the actual site plan review comes before us, I believe that requires a full.
A full.
Traffic analysis, not just a calculation, right? I believe so.
The, when the development for the site plan for the additional apartments does make its way to the board, a new traffic impact analysis will be required in accordance with the regulations, just as one is required for the next item on the agenda, the high-bay proposal. Anytime any site plan in town, regardless of location, is submitted, the traffic study is one of the requirements that we added to the regulations in 2019, whereas previously we did not address traffic at all. So any site plan, regardless of location, is going to be required to have a traffic study.
Thank you, Tim.
What kind of a traffic study, Tim? Are you talking about a?
It varies depending on the level of traffic that is anticipated. The regulations spell out specifically what qualifies for a full analysis, what qualifies for a short analysis.
Okay, do either of those that Paul just mentioned qualify for a full analysis?
The high-bay warehouse that is next on the agenda will not. The apartment development, we will need to see what the proposed traffic generation numbers are before we can make that determination.
That seems.
Okay.
Okay. What can I say? I'm disappointed that we're not doing a full analysis of this, but.
Well, I agree with you, Nelson, on that, but, I mean, our regulations are what we do, not to mention the road is controlled by our esteemed colleagues at the state, that we know they always do their best, so. Any other questions by other members of the board? None? We, we do need a public hearing in this meeting, correct?
I would open up the public.
I would, yeah, okay. So there's no other questions? I think I'm going to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public want to step forward and address the board? Please come forward, take a seat, introduce yourself.
Take a seat here?
Yeah, if you would like.
My name is Joel Folliard. I live at 11 Kimberly Drive in Webster Green, and I just had a couple of things to bring up. Number one, I had sent an email that was supposedly, that was received and forwarded on the 4th of May. According to that meeting, there was no public information received, so I called and asked to have that forwarded again, and I wanted to make certain that you all were in receipt of that, and it would be included as part. you all were in receipt of that, and it would be included as part of the record. And the, the only other thing I really wanted to bring up is the fact that I've lived there for eight years, and I work at Exit 10. Pre-pandemic, in the morning, 45 minutes usually for me to get from where I live to Exit 10. That's going down DW. Right now, when I was coming home yesterday at the intersection of Bedford and, Bedford Road and DW Highway, the traffic was backed up from there almost all the way to my complex. It's getting back to the way it was before, and it is going to be really difficult to get to work and get home from work. And I realize that we've got to balance everything, but there has to be some consideration for the people, as you had mentioned, the people who live in the area, not just at my complex. There's houses all around the area. We have to be able to get out, and we have to be able to do our lives. And you received, you received the email. Okay, good. That's it.
Do you have the picture?
I'm sorry?
Did you have pictures on there?
No. I just, I sent an email on the 4th, and they, they resented, I think it was yesterday. I'm good. Thank you.
I don't remember getting an email yesterday on this.
Casey, can you speak to that?
Uh, there, there was an email from Kendall Smith that was forwarded, that I think you're thinking of, Barbara.
Yeah, yeah. Does that have pictures on?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
So we have not received an email from this gentleman, is that?
Because I've got email receipts that said it was sent out on the 4th. I'm sorry. I have email receipts that were forwarded to me that said the email was sent on the 4th of May, and that they were also sent, I believe it was yesterday, and that it was supposed to have been forwarded. The email came from ComDev. They had to redact all of your personal email addresses, but it was sent out. I can forward that to you if you want.
Well, I'm being asked to make a decision here.
Can you repeat your name, sir?
Joel, J-O-E-L, Folliard, F-O-L-L-I-A-R-D.
Could you just summarize for us? Is it something you could quickly?
I can bring it up. Basically, give me two seconds.
Yeah, Mr. Folliard, I'm not seeing any in mine either, if you would please.
And I have the receipts that they said that they were going to forward it on. All right, give me two seconds. Basically, what I was bringing up in there was traffic, water, noise. And I was thinking that when the gentleman were speaking here in regards to when work was going to be done on the property, with our unit, where our complex directly across the street, is there going to be something done so that the soil's not getting blown around during the construction? We have at the point now where we really can't even garden in our soil. It's not possible for us to do that. It is not safe for us to do that. So my goal in all of this was bringing up a couple of real items, was traffic, water, noise, and soil. And they really all need to be addressed, and I really don't think that they have been. Now, to get this email to you, how do I do this?
Joel, I did find the email. I do have one you originally sent it to our department.
Right.
I remember speaking with our secretary, and I know she did mention sending it to the board members, and I can certainly resend it if there was some kind of issue along the way.
Okay, please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folliard. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the board? Seeing none. And Casey, we did not receive any other emails to read into the record, correct?
Uh, there was an email from Kendall Smith.
I apologize. Casey, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I had it in front of me one moment ago. Let me pull that up again. Would you like me to read that into the record?
Please, yes.
Okay. This was sent yesterday, on June 14th. Good afternoon, Rhonda. I am writing concerning Agenda Items 3 and 4 for the June 15th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I've had a recent surgery and will not be able to attend the meeting in person. I would like to add the following to the record. I continue to be concerned with adverse impacts these projects will have to traffic on the Daniel Webster Highway in this area. I have attached a couple of recent photographs taken on the DW Highway. The, the first photo that she sent is taken from the southbound lane looking south. The proposed new entrance to the light industrial and R&amp;D facilities is across the street from the entrance to the Webster Green condominiums. As you can see, southbound traffic is backed up past the proposed intersection. And I can make sure that this certainly was emailed out to the board, if you missed this in your inbox.
I did receive that one.
You did, okay. So, and you saw the photos. The second photo that you took was taken at the same location and time, this time looking north at the southbound lane. You can see the backup extends almost the current, almost the current entrance to the St. Gobain Performance Plastics. I fail to see how adding additional traffic volume to this area will do anything but make the traffic worse. The current mitigation measure is taken to alleviate the backup. Churning a point lane on the southbound lane leading to Gilbert Crossing has been ineffectual. Part of the problem is the signal timing at the intersection of DW Highway and Bedford Road. The current timing appears to favor northbound traffic. I have noted the number of cars queued on DW Highway waiting to turn left on Bedford Row, at, on Bedford Road is at almost 10 cars. The number of cars queued to proceed northbound through the intersection is at almost, is at most 20. This compares to the near one-mile backup coming south. Therefore, I require that as part of the requirements of this project, the timing of the signal be altered to allow more southbound cars to pass through the intersection during the heaviest traffic times. If the signal timing cannot be altered, then that should be considered a constraint on the project, which must be accounted for similar to dealing with wetlands, setbacks, et cetera. In order to slow traffic impacts as a result of the project, I am requesting the proposed intersection across from Webster Green condominiums be deleted and all traffic entering or leaving the site be routed through the existing signalized intersection at St. Gobain Performance Plastics. Thank you for your time, Kendall Smith.
Thank you, Casey. And that was the only other email we received?
That, that's the only one I, I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
That was the only other email that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. With that being, I'm going to close the public session. Mr. Ham, if you would like to touch upon some of that?
You know, we're certainly well aware there are regional traffic issues out here. You know, we've done counts, we've been out here. In listening to that letter, and I, and I talked to the applicant, we're more than willing to work with the state and look at optimizing that timing, so those queues can be minimized. So we're certainly willing to accept that as a condition to take a look at that as we go through our permitting process. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Ham. And now.
That's awesome, not to say that the state will go along with it, but we will, we will discuss it with the state.
Thank you. Tim, I know, I asked you, I know that most of DW Highway is controlled by the state, but if I'm not mistaken, the lights at Exit 12 are us.
That's the town light, not the state's light.
Yeah, okay.
That, the operations of that signal at Bedford Road and DW is through the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the town. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
So, so we, we would visit that with the town?
Yes, correct. Yes. And there was one comment from Mr. Folliard about the soil movement. Mr. Walker, if you could come forward, I know you were the one to talk to about this. I know that's controlled by the state. Your alteration of terrain permit, correct?
Alteration of terrain, as well as DES in general, dealing with the, you know, the St. Gobain situation. So, like I said, we're, we need to file paperwork on basically how this operation's going to get run. Part of this is soil and dust management. Took us a little time to kind of really figure it out with the apartments, but we were able to get that down pretty good, you know, once everything got started at this point. It's kind of old hat for us. So we'll make sure that that's, you know, the site is watered down, that, you know, the, the dust is under control. And like I said, any other requirements that are, that are necessary, we'll take care. Part of this plan, it involves cleaning off the truck tires before they leave the site, that type of thing, and, and trying to keep the dust to a minimum. We intend on, we intend on doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all the traffic A and T? Back up a while.
Paul, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Pertain to Joel's question about noise. What was it that you, what, what noise are you concerned about? Construction noise or from, from the industry, from the?
I think it's probably twofold. Construction noise, yeah, but you have to deal with that if it's a construction. The other thing was, is that traffic going in and out of the complex itself? Because literally where that driveway that they want to put in is directly across from our entrance, and it directly will affect the people that are fronting directly on DW Highway, and myself too, because I live in the condos.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I asked the right question.
Cool, thanks.
So, uh, so the businesses that are going to be in there, just if you could enlighten me, is like, the types of businesses that are going to be in there, they're not going to be in there at late at night or anything like that? Is typically nine-to-fivers, or is it, or is there potential for late-night business, trucks coming in and out?
It, it's unknown, but if I were to venture a guess, it's going to be typical, you know, nine-to-five, maybe it'd be a little earlier, seven to, seven-to-seven or something like that. I can't promise that. But the, the intention is to just have a, a typical
Yeah.
daytime-type operation.
Right. And then the, the shipping, we just discussed, is that it'll all be directed towards the St. Gobain entrance?
Anything, anything in a, you know, if, if they're just little vans, you know, no biggie, they can go out either one, but if they're, you know, if they're 18-wheelers or something like that, which again, I, I'm not really sure how many of those we're really going to see. Um, yes, they'll be directed to the St. Gobain light and exit that way, enter that way, exit that way.
You know, in some areas, even in town, I think coming down Bedford Road, they have a sign that says no use of the, like the Jake Brake, I think is what they call it.
Yeah.
Is it possible to have something like put in like that, so we can
Not a problem.
maybe alleviate the potential for, you know, whoa, at, at 10 o'clock at night or something like that?
Yeah, we'll, uh, talk to DOT, we can talk to DOT about putting that sign up, right? Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to talk to DOT, not because obviously it's on DW, but we would
Sure.
see if we could stick it. It would obviously be on probably both sides of the road, maybe one up by the fire department heading north and
Yeah.
maybe just past the St., or past the St. Gobain exit heading south.
I live off the highway quite a bit, and I can still hear it sometimes.
Same here.
Late at night, it's like, oh, man, you know? So I can understand if it's right across the street, you know?
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah, we'll definitely talk to them up. Do you think that? Not really a big deal. Yeah, we'll talk to the state. I don't really think it's going to be a big deal.
Cool. Thank you.
Tim, this one's more for you, if you're still on the phone with us. Given that it's a mixed-use development site, are there any constraints as to business hours, delivery times, such as that?
None that were put on the master site development plan or the operation plan that was approved by the board. There are no specifics regarding hours of operation on any of those.
Would we have any control over that, delivery times, such as early in the morning, late at night?
You could put, you could add general conditions regarding deliveries and backing noises and those things. The trick is going to be enforcing those, because obviously, my staff and I do not work overnight. So it'd be something that would have to be reported to police, which would not typically be the utilization of the police for site plan conditions. So I'm not sure exactly the best way to go about doing that.
Mr. Brandon, I feel like that's something that can be handled on, at a simple, in a simple manner.
Yeah, and I, I just want to speak to the general layout of the site. This was actually something that, you know, was given some consideration. Remember, we talked about some of the waivers at the last meeting, and how we're really trying to favor, you know, the, the overhead doors and the, what we would consider as kind of the active part of the site, to the rear of the buildings, so that the buildings actually offer buffering to, you know, from any of those activities, which would really just be offloading, you know, a, a truck, you know, occasionally, or, you know, you know, dealing with any kind of shipments. But I think that the layout of the site really does contemplate that. You know, we have pretty sizable buildings, we have, you know, landscaping out in the front, we have a parking area, then we have landscaping by the highway, and then the highway's quite some width. And, and you obviously do have the residential developments on the other side of the road, which are, you know, fairly close to the highway. But I don't think that any noise that's going to be coming from our facility is going to be any more than what the normal background noise would be because of the location of the site along, you know, DW Highway. But I just wanted to touch on, you know, a lot of consideration was given to the layout when we first started to contemplate this, and probably can't remember because we talked about this so long ago when we first presented the plan, but I just felt it would be good to, you know, to bring that up, because there's some good concerns being, being raised at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Any other questions? Nelson, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more question. Where Shelburne Road, which is the road from the development across the street, intersects with Route 3. Right now, I think that's a two-lane road, stop sign control. Is that, is that correct? And in one of the concepts, it was shown as, there was a slip lane for going south, coming out of Shelburne Road. I'm trying to find where I saw it, but it was in.
Coming south on DW?
Yeah, in other words, somebody coming out of Shelburne Road wanting to go south on DW, there was a slip lane provided. And I didn't, I'm, I'm trying to find it now, but, no. I, I could be mistaken, I don't know where I saw.
Was that something proposed within the new site plans?
It's not part of any of the proposals for this project. We're not, we, we never contemplated any acceleration or slip lanes for Shelburne Road, but we have included a lane, left-hand turn lane for the project. So maybe you were looking at that?
No.
Because we added a lane, kind of a pocket.
This was going, going south, this was going south on Route 3, coming out of Shelburne.
Yeah, I can bring up the proposal for this project. I had it up before the board at the last meeting, but it, it doesn't contemplate any improvements for Shelburne Road.
Okay. That answers my question, basically.
Is that all, Nelson? That was the only question you had?
Yes, at the moment.
Okay. Do we have any outstanding questions left? The clock on this.
If I could chime in just quickly, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate where things stand with the project procedurally. Right now, the 65-day clock, which had been extended by the applicant, is set to expire on June 18th. The applicant would need to grant further extension to that in order for the board not to have to make a decision on that tonight. From the staff perspective, a reminder that the waivers were both granted at the June 1st meeting, so those have already been addressed. And the staff recommendation remains to grant conditional final approval, with the recommended conditions of approval in my memo dated May 28th of 2021.
Thank you, Tim. You beat me to it. So with that in mind, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion in mind?
Oh, boy. Not necessarily yet.
Not yet?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Neil, did you have a question?
I'm just making sure I get all my information, what it's going to say.
That's fine. That's fine.
I'm just trying to find the recommendations.
I don't know if we would want to take.
It would be on page two of the second memo in the packet, the memo that was dated May 28th, Neil.
Thank you.
Do we need a five-minute recess to get situated?
It's on page, yeah, it's on page two of that memo.
It's right under the top of the page, starts with waivers, which the board has already granted, and then about a third of the way down says rec. already granted, and then about a third of the way down says recommendation.
While the members are getting situated, if it comes to it, would the applicant be willing to extend the clock yet again? If you could just step up to the microphone, Mr. Walker, sorry.
Yeah, if the board needs a little more time, we could extend it for a couple more weeks.
I would ask the board, if you are going to go that direction, we should have some clear understanding as to what the purpose for the continuance would be and what is expected at the next meeting, because based on my read of the June first meeting, there was nothing expected of the applicant, it was merely the submission of the materials that were part of the project file for the peer review and the traffic impact analysis to clear up any remaining questions that the board had. I just want to make sure that there's a purpose to continuing this further, because I believe, and again, it's the board's decision ultimately, but I believe the applicant has met their, their threshold to be ready for conditional approval. There are things that need to be fixed, they're in the conditions of approval, and as I understand it, the applicant is more than willing to address all of those as they move forward.
Thank you, Tim.
Is there anything, Tim, is there anything in those conditions that talks to further traffic analysis?
The, I, my comment is item twelve A, which is a couple of things relative to the traffic analysis. One is making sure they address the peer review comments. And secondly, and I'll read this into the record because it's sort of complicated, the analysis currently depicts a decrease in vehicle trips based on the mixed use master plan that calls for this area to be predominantly retail in the initial conditional use permit. A site plan, in a site plan traffic review, the applicant cannot take credit for a reduction in traffic because the mixed use master plan did not permit any actual construction to take place. The report must be revised to eliminate any references in the master plan uses as those, those uses never had approval to be constructed. The traffic should be analyzed based on the current vacant land that exists today.
Thank you, Tim.
But outside of that, they have met the requirements for the local requirements for traffic, and ultimately, the proposed condition number two for all state required permits would include the N H D O T driveway permit for this project.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Nelson.
So, so is it safe to say we can grant conditional approval, provide and throw this in there, that, that's based on approval from the state with their left turn lane and signage that I had mentioned?
That would be included in the, in the approvals for the state permits. If the board wanted to add that additionally, I would suggest adding it as part of the general and subsequent conditions to encourage the applicant to discuss those items with the state during their driveway permit review.
I think I'd be happy, happier with that.
Yeah, it makes it a little better.
Makes it a little better.
Neil, do we have a motion?
Well, Barbara, what?
Just one question.
Yeah, could I have your thoughts on that?
And all, would the signage be for the noise abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, for the noise abatement. Yes, and I have, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead Neil.
That we accept it based on
Just before you go too far, too much further, Neil, the board has already accepted that this would be to grant conditional final approval.
Yes.
Thank you, Tim. Then I make a motion that we grant conditional final approval with it to include the approval from the state for the left turn lane and approval for noise abatement sign coming down from St. Obane, southbound side, northbound side.
And including all of the comments by staff?
And all these comments, all of these
Yes, and the comments recommended by the staff.
Okay, we have a motion made by Neil, do I hear a second?
It's kind of a shaky one, but.
Seconded by Nelson. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All abstaining? That is a passing motion as four zero zero. Thank you. Given that, agenda item is completed. Move on to agenda item four. Which is John Flatley Company, review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan to construct a one hundred and twenty thousand square foot warehouse, distribution building for the requirements of the Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcel is located at seven oh seven Daniel Webster Highway in the I one Industrial District and Aquifer Conservation Area, tax map six E lot zero zero three dash zero six, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to chime in briefly on this before we go into the applicant's presentation, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Thompson, I was going to as well, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This project is also by the John J. Flatley Company. This is the parcel located just to the north of the St. Obane driveway. It's a proposal for a one hundred and twenty thousand square foot high bay warehouse space. The board, or some of the older board members may recall that a similar version of this type of building was previously approved for the site behind St. Obane, which was done by Hayner Swanson, I want to say in either twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. That project never moved forward, and then the applicant moved forward with the Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. This new location is consistent with the Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit Master Site Development Plan and was contemplated by the board as part of the mix of uses by that overall project. Peer review has not yet begun on this project, and additionally, the traffic impact analysis required by the regulations was not submitted by the application deadline and was only just received on Friday. Given that, my recommendation to the board is that rather than finding the application incomplete for non-submission of the traffic, that the board continue both the acceptance and the public hearing to July twentieth.
Thank you, Tim, I would agree with that. Is that okay with the applicant? Yes, Tim, do we need a motion and a vote for that?
You need, you need a motion to do so, that motion should be to continue both the hearing and, both the acceptance and the hearing to July twenty, seven P M, Matthew Thornton Room with no further public notice.
Thank you, Tim, do I hear that motion? I heard it from Barb first, do I have a second from Barb's motion? Seconded by Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that's approved, four zero zero.
Thank you all, have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Tim, have a good night.
Thank you.
Barbara, go ahead.
Just a comment, you already know what we're going to ask. Regarding the what we just tabled and move to July, you know what we're going to ask, so. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Could I ask one question about the traffic, because he didn't make clear to me, what kind of a traffic review are we going to get on this site? It'd be similar to this?
The same type of traffic review was, was with the flexible space. It's, it meets the requirements for short analysis.
It will be, yeah, as he said, the short analysis will be for the high big garage, where it may be a full analysis, he has to check is the extra apartment building.
Yeah, okay.
And we've just started updating the traffic counts and stuff too.
Yeah. You might take a look at today's traffic while you're at it, just a suggestion.
With those two agenda items being cleared, I'd like to invite the original chairman best back to take control of the meeting.
Thank you, Paul, for standing in and covering those items, excellent job as always. Let's see, let's turn to our agenda, and item five is, I'll read it into the agenda, but it's been withdrawn from our consideration. Merrimack Parcel A L L C is the applicant and Merrimack Parcel A L L C and Slate Merrimack Acquisition L L C. As the owners, continued review for consideration of an amendment to an approved site plan requesting to waive the requirement for the installation of a sidewalk per section four point two zero and section seven point oh five, point D, point nineteen of the previous regulations in effect at the time of the original approval. The parcel's located at ten Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I two Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map three C lot one ninety-one dash two and one ninety-one dash two U one dash two U four, case planning board twenty twenty-one sixteen. Item is continued from our May nineteenth planning board meeting. As I indicated, the applicant's withdrawn it, and so we require no vote or action. Onto item six on our agenda, North Shore Trailer and Suspension L L C as the applicant and Joseph Nissam as owner, review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to operate a trailer suspension and repair business. The parcel's located at twenty Star Drive in the I one Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map three D one, lot twelve, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Nope, I'll let the applicant make their presentation for now.
All right, come on forward, tell us what's going on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and members of the planning board. My name is David Moran, I am a senior real estate advisor with Berkshire Hathaway, Varani in Londonderry. I've been working with Mr. Pasquale, who's the owner of North Shore Trailer and Suspension, for a number of years. Actually, I've known him for eleven years when we moved him to his current location in Salem. I helped him find that location, and let me say, it was not an easy task. He has some very unique requirements for his business, and those are some of the things that I would like to address with you tonight. My understanding is that in applying for a waiver of full site plan review, there are actually two steps, and the first being accepting the site plan as it was presented to the board. As you all, I received a copy of a memo from Mrs. Wolf regarding the site plan and some of the issues that she had taken with it. I've actually gone through that plan and corrected a number of those items, primarily administrative items, things that have changed since the original plan was done to the, the current site plan regulations. And, and if you would allow me to, I'd like to pass out copies of my corrected version of that. I have both the full site plan and an eleven by seventeen version.
Sure, pass them out.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, it's my understanding that we first need to look at the site plan and accept it as a reasonable site plan representing the status of the building.
So the standard that we have to do to accept it as complete is whether the application is complete and contains enough information for the board to make an informed decision.
Understood.
That's the standard we're aiming for.
And, and in my opinion, Mr. Chairman, I believe we've accomplished that. What I'm going to do is address
Is your microphone turned on?
Excuse me.
Sir, I see your hand up, this isn't the public hearing part of the
I'm just, is it a button, I would like a copy of what you just passed out.
Do you have extra copies that you can leave on table for folks?
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Matt, for catching my attention.
So what I would like to do is address the comments that were made in the memo from the planning department. In reference to the plan, you'll see that I've, have updated the parking calculation to the new requirements. It is, basically, the property would be used as a maintenance and repair facility for tractor trailer bodies. The property is uniquely serviced, suitable for it because it does contain two fourteen foot overhead doors and about eight thousand five hundred square feet of first floor space. You'll see that I've updated this to identify the number of parking spaces required and that there are sufficient area on the property to accommodate that parking requirement. At this time, the owner of North Shore plans to use the entire facility for his operation. His primary goal is to get his existing business moved to a new location in the fastest possible time, and I can get into that a little bit later. But I've also made changes in, in terms of acknowledging that the proposed building is an existing building, that the proposed sewer connections are existing sewer connections. And also updated the setback requirement. Now, this building, as you may be aware, was built in nineteen seventy-one, so it's about fifty years old. At the time, the setback requirements were much different. As a matter of fact, this building was built as a cross dock with a railroad spur. Not very common nowadays, but back in the day, that was used. So it was allowed to be, to encroach within the setback requirements on almost every end. So you can see that it's very close on the back far corner, probably within about two feet of the existing lot line. But we can't move the building, as a matter of fact, the building has not moved. What you see here on the plan are the exact existing dimensions of the building. Little bit of history, all right? Basically, we signed a purchase and sale agreement with the current owner of the building at the end of April. At that time, again, the first thing we did was to both order an appraisal and an environmental review. Again, the first thing to do when you're trying to buy a building is make sure your banker go along with you. So that was our first task, and sure enough, within a couple of weeks, we had our appraisal and a clean bill of health on the environmental. So on or about May eleventh, I actually went down to the town hall myself to see what was on file regarding this property. At that time, I also spoke to the building and fire marshal. I was able to obtain the site plan that you see in front of you, again, with the changes that I made, which, believe me, are not substantial. I changed the name block and went over the suggestions that were made by the planning department to try to bring it up to, let's say, acceptable condition. But as you can see, this site plan is forty years old. The building has not changed, there has been no additions or deletion to the property with one exception, and that's that the propane tanks were taken out and natural gas was brought in. Again, we corrected parking and zoning setback requirements. The only changes that will be made will be cosmetic to the exterior. I don't know if, if you gentlemen had an opportunity to drive down the Star Drive and take a look at the building, but let me tell you, it's probably the ugliest building in Merrimack. It's, you know, the owner lives in Florida, he's elderly, he's owned this for a long time, it's been neglected. As I was speaking to the building inspector and fire department, I found out that the building has no fire alarm system and that the sprinkler system was disconnected over a year ago for half the building. So clearly, it's been, it's not been maintained, it needs a new owner. And what I'm hoping to bring to the town is an owner who will take pride in the building, bring it up to standards, and, you know, make it a proud location in the, in the town of Merrimack. So I guess the first thing, my first question is, I did try to reach the original George Keller, the original surveyor. Unfortunately, he's out of business, likely has passed away as far as I can tell. So again, because of our time constraints, I felt that it was worth bringing this plan before the board. I will also say that this plan actually came before the planning board back in March of two thousand seventeen, only four years ago, basically for the same reason, which was a waiver of site plan review. At that time, the board saw a fit to grant it. So again, I would again ask you to at least accept the plan as is and allow me to get on to an argument of why a waiver would be in the best interest of everyone involved.
Thank you for providing that information. I do have a few questions about your plan and understanding whether it's complete, because that's the first question that we've got to get to.
Understood.
Although this is a, an older plan, I think you'll recognize the signature of the gentleman in the lower left corner. Still here. Okay, still talking about.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yes, well, well seasoned now. You mentioned that You mentioned that there was an opportunity where the board has considered this site in twenty seventeen and made an approval of it.
Yes.
Do you have a copy of that plan?
I, it, not in my possession, I do on my computer.
Okay.
So I could certainly get that to you.
Yeah, Casey, have you guys have a chance to review the twenty seventeen plan to see what it looks like compared to this one?
Uh, no, I'm only aware that it got a conditional approval and didn't make as far as a final approval. I don't have that with me this evening.
Okay, so it was, perhaps it's a better plan, but wouldn't necessarily tell us whether any of that stuff was done. So part of what's in the staff's memo and part of what I've looked at on the plan here is a challenge, understanding what from the nineteen eighty-one to eighty-two plan was constructed and what isn't. And when there's references to installing a cleanout or a new light pole or proposed additional parking or regrade to existing drainage, I don't know if that was something that was proposed in nineteen eighty-two and is now complete, was proposed in nineteen eighty-two and not complete, or is something you're proposing here today as an addition to the site?
Everything that's on this plan is as was proposed and I believe completed in nineteen eighty-two.
Some of it isn't because the pavement cut out in the front driveway was never done, and your driveway's open the whole length of the property on the street to turn into off of Star Drive.
Yes.
So that gray area that was supposed to be limiting the width of the driveway was never done. But part of that is the challenge for trying to figure out, is the plan complete and have enough information? Because I don't know, for example, it's showing this spur railroad, which I guess is a, is a artifact from nineteen eighty-two. Is it still present? Is it still operable? Does it, is it the intention that it be made operable? Because we're potentially approving it as a feature on a twenty twenty-one plan.
Understood.
Do you know what its status is?
I do not. I can tell you that the road has been completed to cross the railroad tracks. There is a gate there now that Eversource put in for their power plant.
For Star Drive?
For Star Drive.
Okay, so it continues past the cul-de-sac?
Yes, it does.
I did notice on satellite pictures, like a bunch of, I don't know what, stored in the cul-de-sac. Is that related to this property or somebody else's stuff?
That is someone else's property. There is a landscape company, a DODI, I believe is the name, that is using that land.
But nothing to do with you guys?
Nothing to do with us.
Okay, good. Good to know. I can't tell from the plan what kind of services you're going to do, where the trucks are going to be when they're serviced, where they might be stored, and all of those kinds of things. Can you walk me through that information?
The building is eighty feet wide by a hundred feet deep. It's ideal for this type of, of operation because you can actually stack the tractor trailers in too deep. Your average tractor trailer is about forty-five to fifty feet long.
Sure. When you say eighty by a hundred, which part of the building are we talking about? The square part of the back?
The square, the back is eighty-five, the length along the side is a hundred feet.
Okay, but this long building to the right along the railroad track, you're not counting?
We're not counting that because, to be honest with you, again, a little bit of background. Mr. Pasquale approached me about four months ago. His current landlord in Salem, he currently leases about ten thousand square feet of Morgan Storage. He was informed that, well, at the, when he first called me, he was frustrated because he couldn't get the landlord to respond to his request for an extension of his lease. A month later, his landlord sent him a letter, a notice to vacate. He had decided to rent all of the building to one of the other tenants in the building, and he gave him ninety days to move. Since then, I've been scouring this area of the world, looking for a building that would just meet his needs, all right? And basically, that eighty-five hundred square foot building beyond over here, it is what he needs. It has large drive-in doors, it's deep enough for him to get a rig in, it has enough parking so what he can't fit inside, you know, which basically would be transient vehicles, he could store outside. He has six employees, that's all he'll have, he's not looking to grow at this time. So really, that twelve thousand square feet of warehouse, building, is only going to be used a portion of for office, and at some point in time, I'll probably be back here before the board talking about the use for another tenant. Because of the time constraints, literally, in May is when we reached an agreement to purchase this building, and since then, I've been trying to do everything I can to get permission for him to go into this building. There's a lot of work that has to be done. As I mentioned earlier, there's no fire alarm, the sprinkler system is broken, there are a number of other, let's say, maintenance items that need to be addressed, so time is of the essence. We have until the end of July to get him in the building. As a result, again, I chose myself, or at least I advised my client, that we should go to the board and at least request a waiver based upon a plan that we had.
Sure.
And I can understand your reticence because it doesn't accurately portray the way the building is today. Again, I'd like to move this along, and I would go so far as to say, if you could give us a contingent acceptance with the understanding that the new owner will provide you with a current site plan, we could then try to move forward and see if you could grant us a waiver.
Well, let me talk through a little bit of the stuff that's in my mind. I think in terms of this site being a good site for trailer repairs, I think you're right on the money.
Thank you.
I mean, Star Drive, a warehouse on Star Drive, big building, if it fits you, it suits you, it's the right part of town for industrial kinds of things, and, you know, the site, if it's not being used, you know, no reason why this couldn't be a successful site for that. And ultimately, after having some conversations with some of the staff, there's no reason why this couldn't eventually be looked at for a waiver of full site plan review and then ultimately approved. I think the staff was actually hoping to spend some time with you at some point to kind of just point to the things that they want to edit or change or have you clarify on the plan, and with it, with an hour or two of your time with them-
I'll bring my engineer into that conversation.
Even better, yeah.
Even better.
Even better.
And believe me, if, you know, with the time constraints of trying to get approvals from the board, you know, there's a thirty-day appeal period and everything that goes along with it, our closing is scheduled for the end of July. Really, I would have preferred to have approached this in a more professional manner rather than taking it on myself. But we have, I have spoken to an engineer, actually, he was in touch with the planning department this morning. He's more than willing, but again, the time constraints is, it'll take him two or three weeks to prepare a plan, and then you need it two weeks in advance to review it, and then we're already at the end of July. So, you know, we're jammed.
Yeah, our two meetings in July are the sixth and the twentieth.
That's right.
Who's your engineer at the charge?
SSE Engineering is George Fedett.
Okay, I don't think we've worked with him a whole lot over here. Sounds a little familiar. SSE, familiar with?
No, no, not.
I'm sure they'll do a good job for you.
Oh, they're, I've worked with them a lot.
It may be possible, short of having him do a full engineered plan, to give, or you could spend some time with staff fixing this one up and making the clarifications that are necessary, identifying, for all of the things that are described in here as being either proposed or in progress or in the future, indicate whether they're part of the current plan or not. I see another one, there's a septic system to be removed, and it looks like it's a nineteen eighty-two note, but I don't know if it's been removed.
No, it's been removed.
Been removed, well, you know, making that, so, you know, I want to make sure that whatever we approve and vote on in twenty twenty-one reflects what we expect of you, expect you to do.
Understood.
And you can't remove something that's already been removed on a plan, or a light pole that was going to be a new light pole in nineteen eighty-two is probably an old light pole now.
That's correct.
If it's, if it's there, and maybe it's not needed to be there, there's a different approach to it. Let's see if we can figure out a map that fits your timeline in terms of how to accomplish this.
That'd be great.
I, I know that in the staff's memo, they talked about looking for an engineered plan, and I think that Tim thought maybe there was a approach through doing a waiver of full site plan review if we got a little bit more work done on this particular plan. Casey, is that right, or am I confused on that from another project?
Nope, you are correct.
Okay. Casey, what's your thought in terms of how much time it would take them to work with staff to be able to clean this up?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I just saw this plan for the first time just now as he passed it out, it certainly is an improvement compared to what I saw previously. I do think if the board is comfortable with a plan that's not freshly engineered, it could be possible for a conditional approval tonight, and the staff can just hash out some of the nitty-gritty comments after the fact.
Okay.
You, you would need to craft up some language.
I was thinking, you know, what are the deadlines for July sixth, and could you and he get together?
Yeah, July sixth would just be, let's see.
You got about a week for that deadline.
I know, and that's just that time is working against us.
Yeah. Although, Casey, I'm willing to listen if you think that conditional final approval with a whole bunch of conditions to fix these things would work, let's-
It would not be ideal.
Can you get an extension on your July thirtieth date?
Well, see, he's out of his other place in Salem.
We have attorneys that have worked on this for months, just trying to get us to July thirtieth, really. This guy just put us in between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, if he's getting essentially put out of his Salem place, he needs a place to do business.
Well, yeah, he might be out of business for a while. I'm thinking of the sale of this property, you think.
As far as the sale of the property is concerned?
Yeah.
I already have bank approval. All right, so this property is ready to be bought.
Okay.
All right, the only thing that's preventing us really is getting an okay from the board to conduct this business in that building.
Can you get an extension over there for a month or so?
No, I can't. We've already gotten an extension for a month to get us to July.
Yeah.
So there is no chance, again, we've been working with attorneys just to get what we have, and it's been like pulling teeth.
Yeah, those attorneys are that way sometimes.
The landlord is the worst, I'm telling you.
The one in Salem or this?
The one in Salem. Well, I'll tell you, this, this owner hasn't been easy to work with either. He's in Florida, he's set in his ways, it's been a battle. And again, we have all of these discoveries we made about deficiencies that we're still trying to negotiate, but again, we're planning on moving forward regardless.
All right.
Bob, we typically ask for plans two weeks in advance of a board meeting, so if this does get continued to the July sixth meeting, we would probably want plans in a week, and that would give us a two-week window to do our review and drop up a memo for the July sixth planning board meeting. So it would be tight.
Yes. Now, again, if it was just you and I working on this plan to get all the comments in, we might be able to do it. But to get a professional engineer to do it, no chance. Like I said, we're two to three weeks out.
Yep, I think that we could find a solution that doesn't have, you have to have a brand-new engineered plan, and that would both save you some money and save you some time.
Always in favor of that.
But getting the, the details on this plan so we can see what's here and what's And I'm afraid to start tackling that here sort of live in the meeting because we'll overlook something and miss it and not kind of cover those details. It probably would help to know a little bit more about what's on site on, for example, is this proposed additional parking, that's your new stuff that you're adding?
That is new to meet the new requirements.
Okay, and the ones that are along the warehouse to the east side of the property?
Yes.
That are numbered?
One through twelve.
One through four, and then five through eight, and then in the middle, ten through twelve. Are those existing?
Those are existing, well, you know, again, this, this property hasn't been sealed or striped in so long, you can't see the, where the lines were.
Okay.
But, but the space is still there.
Are those spaces counted as spaces to meet your requirements?
They are at this point in time.
Okay, so one of the things that will have to come out of this is putting new stripes on.
Yes.
If they, if you're going to count them-
That is correct.
Then, you know, get out there and stripe them. This landscape island that would narrow the driveway down to the correct width would be something that needs to be completed as a part of what you're coming forward to propose, and I know that there's no other site modifications here, but that one's been overdue for fifty years now.
Thirty years.
Time to go ahead and close that one up. It really, I, I know that you're kind of at a dead end, although it's been extended down across the railroad tracks.
Only if you have a key.
That, but a driveway width where you're sort of paved across the complete front of your property is something that we don't support because it makes it very difficult for traffic to tell who's coming and going and who's in my way and what can I see around, and is that truck going to move the minute I try and pull forward?
Right.
And all of those kinds of things, so you can find that flow to there. Give it a lot of scrutiny for the things that say what's new and old and what's to be done and what's not to be done, and if it's been done, indicate that. If it's not, never going to be done and it's gone, like the propane tanks at the top of the page.
Right.
Just get them off of there. If there are things that still need to be done, those are the things that should say to be done or improved or additions or proposed or that sort of thing. I think, you know, the use of the inside of the warehouse, you're just fixing trailers and things like that, suspension and axles to axle lubricants and oils and things, part of the business?
No, not, not, it's not really a maintenance facility, it's more of a truck body and suspension.
Okay.
So more likely the aluminum sides of it.
Okay.
You know-
Painting, rust removal, anything like that?
There is some painting and rust removal, but it's minimal. Again, it's only, only for repair.
The only reason that we would be concerned about those things is making sure that there weren't floor drains where any of that stuff was running into there.
There's no floor drains in the building.
Are there no floor drains in the building? Good, good to know. Any other requirements for storing flammable liquids or any of those kinds of things?
No. No, basically, the, the trailers are dropped off, or picked up or dropped off. Again, they're stored inside, where they're being worked on. Mostly, the only ones you'll see outside are in transit that are to be picked up or just being dropped off that day. You know, I mean, they run a pretty secure operation. There are only six employees, so, you know, you only have a few mechanics working on them at a time. There's no plans for storage outside.
The approvals that we would give don't, don't limit employees in this situation, so although I appreciate the, the information-
Sure.
Whatever we would approve, you can have as many employees as you got parking spaces or, as you would need in there.
Yes.
Home occupation's the only place where we count your employees.
Okay.
All, no, that's not true. Parking calculations are based on employees and all that stuff too, so there are other places where we do it, but it wouldn't be here. Board members, one of the things that occurs to me if we decide to accept it and continue it for July sixth or continue it without accepting it to July sixth is, we have at least one a butter in the room who may want to offer some testimony, and we can't get there if we don't accept it first and open a public hearing. And so I don't want to, if there are butters or other folks who want to weigh in, I don't want to make them come back again for no reason or not hear what they have to say here tonight and let the applicant hear what they have to say here tonight. With that in mind, there may be some benefit to deciding that it's complete and then asking the applicant to go meet with the town staff to fix up the plan to something that the staff can support and recommend to us. You'd only have about a week to do that, and if you miss that deadline, you'd be on July twenty-
I'll be there tomorrow if she'll have me.
Board members, what are your thoughts about any of that?
Yeah, I understand how you're trying to work with him. There's a lot, lot on this plate. I think it's going to be tough, tough to go. I don't know if you can do that, you know, if you can pull all this off, but-
You, you know, when you come right down to it, it really is not that much, okay? I mean, the building is the building, it has not moved in the last fifty years, so the dimensions are correct. The usage that we're, we're seeking is permitted use in the, in the zone. It's a building that has been neglected, it, it's in sorry shape, it, it needs work. The best thing that could happen to it is for an owner occupied person to move in here. So really, we're trying to, let's say, clean up the details, but really, nothing has changed on this plan since nineteen eighty-two.
Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the-
Again, I'd be happy to walk it with you if you like. What are you doing tomorrow, Mommy?
You don't want to do that. I, I didn't drive by it, but I did look on the Google Street View thing to see what it looks like from the street, and, you know, you're right, it's a tired building that could use some, some new attention and a new purpose. But I think in terms of the use that you proposed, and anytime we're able to find a way to, to have a local business move from another town into our town, I'm glad to have it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll definitely poach the businesses from our neighbors if we get a chance to do that.
Is the railroad spur still there?
It has been disconnected from- Uh, it has been disconnected from the main line, but the tracks are still there.
Still there, okay.
Yeah, and again, now they're just in the way.
Yeah, in the satellite picture, a little north of your site, you could see where the tracks diverge and then they disappear into the woods and doesn't look like it continues.
They don't come out the other side.
Nope, well, the, the main line does, but not the spur.
Right.
Yeah.
Not the spur. So, um, board members, what do you think about the idea of, of finding the application complete so that we can have a public hearing and hear from the abutter? And then decide to, uh, whether or not to have the applicant go sit with the staff and get their plan cleaned up?
I don't see why we can't hear from the abutter without making a declaration that this is complete.
Can't have a public hearing if we haven't accepted the application. There's nothing to have a hearing about if we haven't accepted the application.
Well. That's the lawyer.
Alright, if you say so, still.
Mr. Chairman, I would have no issue with that if staff feels confident that they can work with, you know?
Casey, what do you think? And be honest with us, if we're pushing you in the wrong direction and we should do something different, speak up.
Uh, it was definitely staff's preference originally to have an engineered plan. Uh, I know, uh, Tim specifically felt that there was, uh, flexibility with what we were, what was presented here. Um, and I do think that there has been some improvements in the right direction, um, and that, and he did address most of the comments in our memo, uh, keeping in mind that this is a waiver from full site plan review and this is not a full site plan review. So, it does not need to meet our full extent of our regulations. So, so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with acceptance.
Thank you for that information, and I, I also, um, am sympathetic to the idea that if we put the applicant to a full engineered plan on twenty twenty-one standards, drainage and things that were done in nineteen eighty-two just aren't gonna meet our standards and then we're gonna be putting the applicant through how many thousands of dollars to install new fixtures and things? When there's, I, although certainly those things would be improvements to the site, the site's essentially functioned for fifty years without those improvements. Anyway, what's the will of the board?
Well. You want us to make a motion that this is accepted?
Or tell me that you're not willing to. I mean, I, I would, that's, that's the position I would support, is to find it complete, hear from the abutter, and then send the applicant to work with staff, um, to get it cleaned up so that we can look at it on July sixth. That's the course of action that I would prefer, but I only get to vote once and there's the rest of you and.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forth a motion to find the, uh, application complete so we can move forward to the public hearing.
Is there a second for Paul's motion?
Second.
No. Uh, Count Barbara is the second, she said it out loud. Uh, Councilor Healy, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be so informal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so the application's complete. Uh, let's open the public hearing and allow any abutter or interested citizen who wishes to weigh in. You know, let this, come on forward. Understood. Introduce yourself and then tell us what the board should take under consideration.
Hi, I'm Richard Calicar, I represent Calicar LLC, and I own the property on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Okay.
The gate that PSNH put there was under contract with me, they have a, um, right-of-way to get to their property, which is over more to the right towards Anheuser-Busch.
Oh, that's that power substation or something we approved half a dozen years ago or something, isn't it?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a whole thing about that, but it gets back to, yeah, there, there was originally a buffer, uh, issue, and there was a deal worked with PSNH and the town, 'cause we went to court over it, uh, about, uh, adding, I sold them an additional amount of, uh, property. And then there was, um, they, then you then approved an additional substation to go in.
Okay.
Okay, so you, um, with my property is we're dealing with, problem is, you're dealing with a site plan that does have issues. I believe the cul-de-sac has changed or was attempted to change since that time period. As you've already pointed out, the, um, buffer between the, um, it's all one piece of pavement that, that connects. And there is concern of that with drainage because although that classic crossing is locked temporarily, it is open for what may be developed in the land back there, and you're dealing with a railroad crossing here, which, um, has additional safety issues, and concern of drainage coming from that lot would be an issue.
Okay.
Um, and that's it. Again, approving a site plan that's, uh, forty years old, uh, that has had many, that has had some changes, concerns me, also concerns me about the parking, where he's listed the spaces that would be, I assume, used for this, and then he talks about further rental of the other space, and the other thing creates a, uh, an issue. Now, these are only a mission, questions that I have that haven't been answered and should have been answered to this point before approval.
Okay.
That's.
Thank you for that. Any questions by members of the board? Thank you.
And I would ask that anything that the board, uh, gets as far as going forth, that I also get a copy of?
Can't guarantee that, this is available publicly at the department, you can come and get it or have it from there, but we can't cause the applicant to, you know, make him send it to you or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you, but you, uh, will get notices whenever it's on the agenda, it'll be on the July sixth agenda. Um, the stuff that he fixes up in the next week will be at the department anytime after next week, so you can come and take a look at it. It's on the other side of town.
I know where it is.
Yeah, yeah, anytime, any file that, that they have in the department, you can look at anytime you want.
Okay, and that'll be updated by next week?
Well, he has to have it updated by the twenty-second in order to make our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
A question before you go, uh, yeah, um, do you, are you aware of any drainage problems here? You mentioned water as an issue, and I see it looks like a drainage swale that goes under the, under the old connection to the railroad tracks and goes off-site here.
The, the drainage I'm concerned is from the parking lot into the street, 'cause that does flood.
Do you think that that would be improved by putting the grass barrier back where it's supposed to be, or you, are you worried that that'll make it worse?
I, I'm not an engineer, I, I, I can't.
Okay, understood.
I can't give you.
I just wanted to know if you were aware that there might be problems for real.
Well, I know when you drive down there now, there, uh, when you get to the point where this pro, um, property starts, there's a little fall-off.
Yeah.
And, and that area, I'm sure during today's brief rainstorm, I don't know if it happened here, I'm a few miles south, but, um, it would have flooded.
Yeah.
Show me, uh, on one of the plans or the picture or something where you're talking about the water flooding, if you can.
Well, if you look at the, yes, do you want me to come up or?
Uh, hold it up, I could, I could follow, follow you.
Let me get orientated. It comes in and it floods in here.
Okay.
It floods into the street is where it floods.
I gotcha. We'll ask the applicant about that and what might change. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay, we'll close the public hea, oh, go ahead. Come back to the microphone, 'cause the folks at home can't hear you if you don't use one.
One comment, I spoke to another abutter, CMI, who also owns land directly in, over the tracks on the other side of here.
Okay.
That I believe was not notified.
Okay.
He said he had not received notification.
Um, well, when you get a chance to look into things, just make sure we did the notifications correctly and didn't overlook anybody. Um, if there was a, uh, there, there may not have been, it may, they, they don't, may, might not count as an abutter, but obviously, if they do count as an abutter and they haven't been notified, then that's gonna mess up everything to do with the schedule plan because it would require re-notification of all the abutters. So, hopefully, they're, they're. Yeah, the staff usually goes through those pretty well to know whether someone counts as an abutter or not, but we'll have them look it over again and make sure.
Just as a comment, they have an easement across my, the, my crossing and, uh, my way.
Okay. CMI, okay, thank you. An easement holder wouldn't necessarily be regarded as an abutter as it relates to the easement itself, it's the.
Right.
Property where they own the fee.
Right, understood.
Okay, so, um, you should take a look into the, the, when you meet with the staff on the plan, when you take a look at where this, uh, grass area we put back, uh, be prepared on July sixth to comment on, um, the abutters' comment about potential drainage or water flowing.
Absolutely, and, and, and I've, uh, obviously been to the site a two dozen times in the last three weeks, and, uh, uh, there is some ponding that seems to be across the street. Uh, does it, it looks like there was a drainage culvert put in there, but not on this particular property. And I do agree that if we put in that, if we limit the driveway, that should, uh, take care of some of the runoff, if not all of it.
Yeah, should catch it, catch a lot of it before it hits the street and you get it into, into some grass or some pavement, uh, uh, not where there's unpavement. I'll also get a chance just to go take a look, and see, do you know if the, the driveway, the parking lot is higher or lower than the level of the road?
It, it seems pretty flat to me. It comes down off a little rise as you get into this parking lot.
Okay.
But the road itself seems to be on par with the parking lot.
Okay. Be prepared to, uh, speak and, and talk about that. I know we're not gonna require you to redesign the drainage, but, um, discuss it with the staff and.
Absolutely.
Consider how this, uh, bit of pavement is going to affect, uh, the removal of it will affect that consideration. Board members, um, we haven't made a decision on waiver of full site plan review, and so if the drainage information that you're hearing with the potential to impact the neighbor makes you want to take a different course and see that drainage engineered, um, that's still your prerogative, um, to, to do that, and, um, if we weren't under the time pressures for, for this applicant, um, I would probably be inclined to hear that kind of a discussion or, or consider it.
I hear you. I know what you mean.
Uh, and I don't know that time pressures should, um, have us making different decisions about what we would wanna see for engineering and drainage. I think probably more than anything else, the fact that there aren't any physical changes to this site other than changes that will clearly improve drainage, um, none, none are being made, um, from the condition that it's been in for a lot of decades. And that's come forward to me in terms of, uh, being able to waive full site plan review. It doesn't mean the site's perfect or that it's operating correctly, it's just that there's no changes to it for, um, their provision. Other discussion or questions for the applicant? What's the, Councilor Healy?
Also, just a thought, um, there are other businesses along that route as well, and we're, at this point, we're not sure where the drainage is originating from. It may not even come from that lot, it may be coming from lots next to it.
That's a great point, and I think, um, one of the things that I heard from Tim is that with respect to the business across the way that thinks that the cul-de-sac is its materials storage yard, there's some effort to work on compliance and getting that fixed up and cleaned up as well, but, um, I, I know that storing, it looks like granite, I don't know what it is.
The, the previous occupant was actually a granite cutting company, um, on this site.
Is all that stuff that's shown on the satellite still there or is it?
No, no, that's long gone.
Okay, so the cul-de-sac, the paved circle that should be the cul-de-sac is probably damaged and beat-up pavement, but it's.
Oh, it's beat up.
More or less there.
But it's, it's pretty much there.
Okay, what's going on across the street now?
Like I said, directly across is just material storage for, for dotty landscaping. So, they have piles of stone, they have piles of mulch, they have a couple of storage trailers. Uh, again, mostly just trucks coming and going.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? Um, you have to catch us on the next public hearing, we're closing. I know, but we already closed the public hearing, but, but we will have another one next time. We, we meet on July sixth, so you'll have a chance to follow up on those issues. Other comments, Nelson?
No, most.
What action would the board like to take?
I thought we'd taken it.
Well, we've, we found it complete, we haven't decided to, uh, give the applicant some instructions to meet with the staff or do any other, any other particular thing.
That's what we intended, right? So.
July sixth.
July sixth?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, you in the rearview mirror, ready? You got your microphone turned off? Does anyone wanna make a motion? Paul wanna make a motion?
I would like to, uh, put forth a motion to continue this to the July sixth meeting to give the applicant time to work with staff and, uh, bring these plans in compliance.
Is there a second for Paul's motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson. I, uh, I, I support that cause, that, that course of action, but I have to take the second to just remind the applicant that if you don't get it done with the staff where they can recommend to us a plan in a week, then July sixth won't work for you and these deadlines are gonna be in some.
I understand completely, this is my highest priority.
Understood. Uh, any other comments or questions by members of the board? Then all in favor of continuing to July sixth, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Uh, five zero zero.
Thank you very much for your time.
And we will see you on July sixth.
And I'll be in touch with the planning department tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for going through all the work to try to get this in order for us. Let's see here. All this stuff aside. Alright, the next one on our agenda is, item number seven on our agenda is LMSNH as the applicant and Karen Roy as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan for a contractor yard for a mosquito control business. The parcel's located at two fifty-five Daniel Webster Highway in the I-one industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map three D two, lot thirty-nine, case planning board twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Uh, nope, I'll let the applicant make their presentation.
Thank you. Um, I would note that we've got an email that was, uh, available for us as we arrived here tonight that we should take account of when, when it, and if we get to a public hearing tonight. If I forget or overlook that, Casey or anyone else that remembers, please remind me to attend to that email. With that, please introduce yourself, Matt, and tell us about the project.
Alright. Alright, good evening, uh, Matt Peterson with Keesh Norsham Associates, uh, here representing the development of two fifty-five Daniel Webster Highway. I would say this is probably a first in twenty-five years of doing this here. This was in front of you guys two months ago for a veterinarian clinic. Full plans gone through Foson O'Neil, I pretty much had my lars ready to go back to the town and they pulled the plug. Financial, I think, was their reasons there from, uh, some sprinkle in the building and that kinda stuff there. Obviously, in this day and age, real estate was hot and they found somebody else to come into the site and needed this submitted quickly for them, and they lucked out that we had the plans and stuff ready to go. So, we have brought this forward, this is an existing business in town, they're currently over at Columbia Circle. I don't know if you guys have, since you've seen this application come in front of you, but since they hired me, I've seen more of these signs everywhere throughout all of New Hampshire than I've ever seen in my life. So, they pretty much go from the White Mountains all the way down to Salem and Nashua is where I've seen all their vehicles and stuff like that. This use here, again, we've got the, um, the existing site plant, oh, great, I forgot which was the sheets, here we go. Uh, the existing site plant sits at the corner of Star Drive, obviously, you guys were just looking at that with the previous application. Um, we, the only difference on this application from what you saw previously with the Coda Ag Vet is that we were proposing to square off the building in this corner here and then the other corner. That is no longer the case with this applicant. Um, this is not a retail spot. This is basically, um, a locker room for their employees and storage for the chemicals that they use on site. Um, the trucks would be parked on site as they are up in Columbia Circle, they'll come in the morning, get their truck, drop off their car, and head out to their sites. In New Hampshire, the way they allocate their product is they have about a hundred gallon water on the, each truck, and then they store between two to three chemicals inside the building and about thirty gallon containers on spill containment kits, and I have pictures of that stuff to show you here. And in Massachusetts, they're allowed to onsite. And in Massachusetts, they're allowed to onsite, put the chemicals into the 100 gallons of water and then go to their sites. I guess New Hampshire's regulations is that they are not allowed to fill up onsite. They have to fill up at each site that they go to. So they carry on the trucks themselves there, something very, very standard here. Similar, it's not exactly like this, but all you've got is about a Windex bottle size of the actual chemicals that they'll carry. And then once they get to their site, I don't know if you've seen their trucks, but they're the green trucks with the big guy and he's got the blower on the back. So they'll put the water in the blower, then they use about a teaspoon, he said, or a couple teaspoons on each one that they'll put into that, mix it, and then they go take care of the yard. And as you can tell, even if they spilled the cap of this or so, this is meant to be sprayed on yards, grass, that type of stuff. It breaks down very quickly. They typically tell their employee, customers to about 20 minutes to not let your dog outside. They said last week with a 90, it's about five minutes, but they tell everybody about 20 minutes because it's still wet and that's when it can transfer. Once it gets dry, it doesn't transfer. These guys are regulated by the state of New Hampshire. One of the reasons that I became an engineer is that I am not very good at spelling or English words there sometimes. So some of these chemicals that they use, I'm not going to try and explain it to you, but there's fact sheets on all this stuff here. It's been studied since about 1979. I learned a lot on it last week going to the Conservation Commission last Monday. We gave them the overview and stuff like that, and they were good with the applicant that we're proposing. Just to show you what the onsite containment, basically we'll have our materials sitting on a spill containment canister. And then we'll also have spill containment kits that we have onsite there. Again, this is not something like St. Cobain, and it was asked at the conservation, this does not have any of those types of chemicals in it. This is something that is being sprayed out there. So a spill is pretty minor for the amount of material that they cover. But again, also it dissipates and stuff like that that they're using it for. We, on this application, have an actual decrease in the overall runoff because unlike what I said on the other one where we're adding the building, we are only, I don't know if you remember, I'm sure you do, but we have parking and pavement that was out in the right of way on this applicant. So we were proposing to take that out on the last one. So by taking that out of this one here and not adding the building, obviously our pre and our post decreases. We go from 2.29 down to 2.16. It's a pretty minor site, obviously. It's a pretty tiny site that's there. I think that's kind of the gist of it all. Again, you guys have seen the site. It's really just kind of the use that's different on this one here. So I'll take any questions or comments you guys have and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You mentioned that the employees are going to come and park and then take off the trucks. How many trucks do you envision on the site?
Yeah, they're, they're going to have 15 to 20. I think we have 19 parking spaces.
And they're going to have 15 trucks?
Yeah.
How, is that bigger than what they're doing on Columbia Circle?
It's about the same right now. They just, up on Columbia Circle, they were renting, kind of like what you just heard there. And they were told that they were going to have less parking spaces now as of like a couple of months ago.
Okay.
They kind of already had them.
Need, need some new choices for that.
Spaces for, yep.
When they set up shop on Columbia Circle, did the fire department and the building inspector take a look at the spill containment and all those specific things?
I was told that they are regulated by, because we just dealt with this at conservation, the New Hampshire Division of Pesticides, and they are subject to random and periodic inspections.
Okay.
So yes, they, this is all regulated through, through the state and those divisions with that there. I'm a fire department. I don't know if they went because it was a rental. This will obviously be a new site. So they're very involved with it right now.
No, I understand.
I couldn't tell you what they did on the other one because I just didn't permit it.
I mean, I'd assume that they were acting appropriately and in compliance on Columbia Circle. But because of whatever site plan was approved in Columbia Circle, they didn't come before. We've never taken any, that information in into consideration. And I, you know, depending on how it was originally approved, that's probably the appropriate thing to have happen. But it just means I'm not familiar with some of the specifics of what you would ask of this kind of business. But it is noteworthy to me that it hasn't caused any issue, didn't require any prior approval or any issues on Columbia Circle. That, that information doesn't always necessarily mean that they're going to do the same thing down here and comply, but it means that there's a firm understanding of how to run your business in an effective way. Are these chemicals available only to professionals or are these commercial versions of stuff I could buy at Home Depot if I wanted to or?
I do not believe, no, I would say you can't buy these at Home Depot. They've got to be regulated by New Hampshire Division, but that's a guess on me on pesticides. I don't have that exact, I didn't, damn it.
Well, commercial pesticides or any chemical, weed control and all of that are regulated on the state level, but I could still deal with my own yard if I want to. But anyway, I was just curious. Is that fact sheet available to, to provide to the board?
Yeah, I submitted it with the application. Oh, maybe I didn't, but I can definitely send that over there.
I don't know if the staff distributed it to us or not, but as long as I, it's got nothing to do with the approval. I'm just curious.
Yep.
Is it in here somewhere?
I don't believe that was submitted originally.
I think I got it off of the Conservation Commission last week. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
It's a, a short season for this?
Yes, they, the trucks will be parked from November 15th, I think there was the last date that they do it. Somewhere right around then until April 15th, yep. We talked about plowing the driveway to make sure it's clear for fire and stuff like that during the winter. But yeah, this will sit vacant for three or four months.
And at the facility, is there anybody that's there all day? Is there, is there any kind of staff or employees?
They have, they have their main facilities down in Massachusetts, and that's where their call center is. So everything goes through their call center for people that want to use them and stuff like that.
So this is just a staging area for the employees to come get their stuff, get the truck?
They don't need the building.
Right. Well, it's kind of like locker rooms, a little bit in the storage for that. But yeah, not a lot of the building, though.
Yeah, they don't really use as much building at all. Neil?
So the, the building itself will be used for like containment, like keeping all the
Those three contain, there'll be at least, there'll be approximately 30 gallons of each. So about three different 30 gallons on those plats that I showed you there. Yep.
So the garage.
Yeah, it's a garage. It's turning into, yeah, that's storage for somebody. Yep.
Other comments or questions?
No. Do you, I'll ask one more question. Do you have enough parking? It sounded like you were close. You, you had said 15 trucks, did I hear?
Yep.
And there's 16 parking spaces there?
Or 19. I thought you said 19 spaces.
There is 15 and seven. So we've got 23. So yes.
So the, the plan that we have?
Yep.
If I didn't show any.
What's up?
I was just looking at, what do we got, one of six? The first one, it shows parking in the front in addition to the ones in the back.
So that, so that's the existing conditions plan. So that shows the one, two, three, four, five spaces that are in the right of way that are then being removed.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's, that's
Then when you go to the next sheet, your removals and erosion shows those being removed up in there. Yeah, we, we didn't want to, I mean, last time they just removed that out of the right of way and cleans it up.
Is there, nobody going to check on this for six months while these trucks all sit there in the weather?
No, no, no. Like I said, they're going to, I, that's what I brought up too. Because from a fire safety, they still have to have access and stuff like that. So they'll make sure the snow plowing and stuff like that's taken care of. And no, they have to make sure the periodically check it, yes. They don't just go away for the four months, but there won't be any customers in that, but the owners will still be maintaining that, yes.
Will customers come to this place to solicit their business? No?
Yep, no, they just do, so in Massachusetts, if you Google their site, Massachusetts, and I was, it was kind of funny because I looked up to see what it was, and it's a big yellow sign and it says, "Bite me" on it. And I said, "Oh, great, you're going to go get me to permit that on Daniel Webster Highway? I don't think I got any chance of that." So he said, "No, that's their call center." So every call goes into there from everywhere and that's where they work out of, so. And send their guys from there, so yeah. No retail.
Okay, so the staff, thank you, the staff's recommendation is we find the application complete? Does anybody need any more additional information to make that kind of a decision? If not, what's the motion?
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Well, I would move to accept the plan as complete.
Nelson makes the motion. You want to call second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero for that. Are there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? I don't see any in the room, but we will take note of the email that was received from Doreen, Doreen Wynot, who indicates, "Received notice of the planning board meeting for mosquito control business that is wanting to be my neighbor. I wanted to attend tonight's hearing. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend. I'm the owner of the Animal Care Center of New Hampshire at 257 Daniel Webster Highway, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I am most concerned about any chemicals that will be in and around my building and anything that may be in the air. Our dogs are outside all the time and I do not want anything that could possibly cause harm to our clients' pets in close proximity. Thank you for ensuring the safety of the pets in our care." Doreen Wynot, Animal Care Center of New Hampshire, professional pet sitting, et cetera, 603-888-8088. So that's the information from the email. If there's no other butters who wish to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing. I do want to dive into that a little bit. You talked about after an application, it takes 20 minutes and things, but you're not actually applying any product here at the site.
So the good thing about New Hampshire is they require them to do it onsite. So if this was in Massachusetts, yeah, the 17 people would fill up their 100 gallons of water at site and then drive out. Here in New Hampshire, no, nothing onsite here.
So, so they have a tank on the truck with clean water in it and they're going to
They have a 100 gallon tank and then they have those little portable ones that I just saw there. They put the water into the backpack. They put their teaspoon into that. They mix it and they go blow it into the yard.
And in Massachusetts, they would put the chemical into their 100 gallons of water?
Into that and then just pour the 100 gallons into their blowers and head off to their sites, yes.
So no applicant, not even probably treating your own mosquitoes on the site, or I guess you could if you wanted to.
We could put a note that they couldn't, I mean, I don't see them doing that where they would use their own product, but yeah.
I, I don't think ultimately would matter because any neighbor anywhere can treat their mosquitoes if they want to. And
And somehow the mosquitoes just stay on your property, not the ones right across. Still trying to figure that one out.
Islands where they're not allowed and then they cut up into other spaces. So if there was a spill of this, it's going to be contained in your mats. It's not airborne. It's not aerosolized. It's not pressurized.
It breaks down very quickly over time. And yes, very small portions of stuff that would actually be able to be spilled outside.
Does it come out as a mist or as a
It's a wet mist, yep.
Wet.
And then it dries.
Like watering your lawn, like a hose-like?
And they've got the big, you know, kind of like Star Wars.
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't seen these guys do it, but what I've seen from other companies, it's almost a little bit like a fog. More fog than mist. So it kind of gets into the trees and sticks to the leaves and does all of that. But that's the actual application onsite here. We're not applying anything. And even when it's applied, it's diluted into water and, you know, capful into a sprayer tank or something. It's not 100 gallons of poison, you know.
Does it attack other insects as well as mosquitoes? You know, we're targeting mosquitoes here, but what about bees?
Looking into it, it does fleas and ticks.
Yeah, I thought there was, yeah, yep.
And that sort of thing.
Bees? Doesn't get bees?
I, no, I did not see bees. That would be, I don't think they'd be allowed to if they did that.
Well, I would hope, yeah.
I've never dealt with this company before about their product, but when I was looking to do mosquito control and other ants and things at my house, if you wanted somebody to treat wasps and hornets and stuff, that was a separate treatment by a different company to do that. So I don't know about this company whether they can also do that for you, but.
Well, I was thinking more of honeybees and bees that are endangered because of pesticides, you know.
I have no idea.
So what are the operation hours typically? Where do they show up at 6:00 and get home at 5:00?
Yes, I think I put seven to
Was it seven?
Seven to seven, I thought I did. But they said most of their guys are back by 4:35. But yeah, it would be, let's just seven to seven is what they, I think they were saying seven to five, but I wanted to say seven to seven to make it clean.
Is that in your general notes? I can see if I could read it from here. I think since this isn't a residential neighborhood or dealing with, you know, people
Typical hours of operation proposed mosquito scod will be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing, that it's not going to really give, be an impact on the
Yeah, it's not particularly
On anybody else?
What, what page did you see that?
6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I can't read that far away. It's on note 19 on the site plan.
Yeah, it looks like adequate lighting and everything, too.
And they got a plan for snow storage and all that stuff? Okay. We've decided it's complete. We've had a public hearing. Are there any waivers requested?
Yes, there's the same waiver that we had on the last one there, which was from section 3.11, which is the parking standards for one, three, and five mitigation of impacts of parking lots. That is for the 8% internal landscaping, the 15 shade trees around it, and then the perimeter landscaping of trees. Again, as we stated at the last hearing, this was all existing. We'd like to keep it as is instead of cutting up the pavement. To do that, we've already removed five parking spaces to do that. And we believe that we met everything with this site here. This is extremely landscaped at the front of the building, which is going to stay, which was getting ripped out last time. I think it's a lot of nice growth on that landscaping. So we feel the site meets the intent of the town's requirements and would request the waiver.
So most of the parking spaces you have for your trucks are going to be behind the building or a few of them to the right of the building? Is that right? Most of them behind or all of them behind?
Well, there's 15 behind there. So yeah, all of those would be there. And then we've got six spaces off to the side there.
I'm not necessarily one that thinks all trucks are ugly, but I like trees better. And so some kind of screening from the street, just to kind of have a
Oh, we did do that. That's on the landscape plan, sorry.
Show me that or talk, walk me through that.
So we did the same screening we had done on the last one here. We put two trees in here plus the vegetation in the front corner where we were pulling out the pavement. Also showed shrubs around the corners of the landscaping and then threw something up along Star Drive as well. Yes, we didn't go with nothing, sorry. We did the same landscaping as the last applicant as well.
Just not taking it out by the building, leaving that there, okay.
And leaving everything by the building in, yes.
Works for me. Other comments or questions?
It's good.
No, it's good.
Okay. So the applicant's requesting a waiver from our parking lot standards, which would require some number of landscaped islands in the middle of the parking lot, which don't seem to be particularly useful or appropriate for the site. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we waiver, we grant a waiver from the parking regulations because the reason that it would be unnecessarily
There's strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship or specific circumstances relative to the site plan or the land indicate the waiver. So it's probably the first one, strict conformity is a unnecessary hardship. Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
Second.
Second by Neil, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to grant the waiver. Does the board have any further discussion before it considers final disposition of the application? If not, then it would be appropriate to entertain a motion for conditional final approval subject to the conditions in the staff's memo. I don't believe we've added any here tonight. Anyone want to make such a motion?
I will make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the site with the conditions as requested by the staff, in the staff memo.
Excellent. Is there a second? Second by Council Healy. Further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. You are all set. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, board.
Thank you for the good fortune of rescuing a site that was almost something else or almost unneeded. Okay, let's see, I've got, where did I do with my agenda? Okay, item number eight on our agenda is Thomas Moore College as the applicant and Thomas Moore Foundation as the owner, "Review for Acceptance and Consideration of a Site Plan Amendment to Improve Parking and Pedestrian Walkways Within the Campus Ground." amendment to improve parking and pedestrian walkways within the campus grounds. The parcel's located at six Manchester Street in the I-1 industrial and aquifer conservation districts, tax map two D, lot forty-one dash four. It's case number Planning Board twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. Casey, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Not at the moment.
All right. When you are ready, take your time, but when you're ready, introduce yourself.
I'm a multitask, I will talk and open files at the same time, so.
Awesome.
For the record, Austin Turner with Bowler. I'm here this evening with Matthew Whitmer from Phase Zero Architects, as well as Dr. Fahey from the Thomas More College. As was mentioned in the opening, what we're doing, this is kind of the first part of a multi-phase upgrade to the campus, and this work, I guess you could call it the enabling work, if you will. So, what we're proposing now is more of a formalization of the existing parking, which is kind of just on some dirt areas on the interior of the campus.
Okay.
Formalizing access to the campus and then making some improvements to center of campus in terms of pedestrian connectivity, some interior landscaping and amenitizing of that. Really, it's going to be in support of a larger and phased-in improvement plan where some new dormitory is going to be constructed, perhaps an expansion to the dining commons and things of that nature, which we're going to go through, and Matt's going to talk about some of the, some of that improvements as well, and then I'll get into some of the specificity with respect to what we're proposing and is the initial request as part of this application.
Okay.
And I think if the board is amendable, what I'd like to do is have Dr. Fahey just give a brief introduction of himself, what the college is doing, and some of the larger discussion of the campus as well.
I'd love to hear that. I toured the college a couple of years ago with the Rotary Club, I think we had a meeting there, and, but it's been a while, so tell us what, tell us what's going on. Welcome.
Thank you. Sure. For the record, Dr. William Fahey, the president of Thomas More College, which I believe is Merrimack's only college. So, if you haven't had a chance to visit, we are built out on the Bowers Blanchard historic property. So, that would give you a sense of sort of our core visual identity. I've been the president since two thousand nine. The college was founded in nineteen seventy-eight. Its student body has, for most of its history, been below seventy. When I was president, it was about sixty. For most of the last five to ten years, it's bounced around eighty or ninety. I can just tell you, because this might be an obvious question, Thomas More College, like Makers Mark Bourbon and the United States Marine Corps, is small by design. We intend to keep it small. But if you look at the photos, you can see that there is a charming New England farm that's been turned into a college, and we're looking to increase the amenities and preserve the beauty. If you were to come down to the college before or after it rained today, it's quite nice. The students are gone. That central parking area, you don't really notice. Our challenge has been during the academic year, the heart of the college is a large dirt parking lot, and so when visitors come, whether they're student applicants or donors, it's immediately jarring to see these beautiful buildings, but the center of your campus is often mud and a lot of congestion. So, our, our objective in this first phase of the campaign is simply to be good stewards of, of what we have and make the, make the campus more beautiful in the center by moving the parking to the periphery, putting in paved walkways, and doing some greenscaping. As Austin said, it is the foundation for enabling a proposed larger campaign, but larger relative to our scale. There's, there's no real desire by anyone from the chairman of the board down to the cook to be much larger than we currently are, but we do need some infrastructure improvements, some building improvements, and as Austin said, that may include a new dormitory to bring us up to a hundred and twenty students, as opposed to what we're currently built out for, which is about ninety-five students. We're not, we're not talking about taking on Southern New Hampshire or anything stunning like that. It's an independent liberal arts college, it's Catholic, but we're not part of the diocese, we don't receive funding from the state or the church, and I'm very happy to answer questions or to hand it over to the professionals.
Does anyone have any questions? If you haven't been there, I do encourage you to go tour. They took us all around the building and showed us some of the history of it.
Yeah, I go by it every day, because it's on my way to the YMCA.
Those are next-door neighbors, we have their sign on our property, and it's a wonderful arrangement, because I'm probably the only college president that doesn't have to build out a massive sports complex for our student body.
Yeah, a lot of your students do come to the Y.
Yeah, and, yep, some staff do.
I think Maureen Mooney is one of your trustees.
That's correct. An alum.
An alum? She's a, was the dean of a charter school and on the chair of that board at her arm-twisting, and so know her very well, and that's how the connection to the Rotary Club and me going to tour it and all of that kind of stuff occurred. So, I know at least that much about what you do because of that, not, not nearly enough. Do others have any comments or questions?
No, I have no questions.
Thank you, Dr. Fahey.
Not at all, my pleasure.
Let's understand a little bit more about the proposal itself and what you need from us.
Thank you. Excuse me, for the record, I'm Matt Whitmer from the architectural firm of Phase Zero Design. Thank you for having me tonight, it's wonderful to be here. This is actually my first in-person hearing in about a year and a half, so it's nice seeing you folks without the black squares around you. It's, it's a pleasure. A little bit of what Dr. Fahey and Austin had mentioned is really what's on this plan that's up on your screen as well as on this, this board tonight, and we'll probably refer back to this. This represents really the full build-out, if you will, that Dr. Fahey had mentioned. Again, this is not what is being proposed for you tonight as part of this master plan improvements project, but what I did want to show you is a little bit about where the college is heading. So, on this master plan, the buildings that are in a, in a brown color, you can see, are actually existing, and the blue are proposed. We are looking at, if you start at, at twelve o'clock on the plan where the academic building is, and then moving around clockwise, we are looking at an expansion to the existing library. We are looking at a proposed new chapel, which was a project that was actually submitted to the, to the board, I think back in two thousand and four. Moving down, we're looking at a expansion to the barn building, which is their dining commons right now, so they can accommodate the, the full student body during a meal, and continuing along. We're looking at the existing boys dormitory becoming a guild hall, a classroom space that's existing. The second building above that's tan right now is the existing women's dorm that will become the men's dorm, and then the blue building to the north of that is actually going to be the new women's dorm with some type of a pergola that would connect the, the two spaces. What you see here is, is small scale, it certainly has an impact to the master plan itself, but, you know, is really something that would be done over time. This is not a build-out that's happening tomorrow, we're certainly not going to come back to you in September with, with more buildings or structures, but certainly a little bit of what we are looking at, which is why this, this phase is so important of what we're looking to do. Let's see, can you see my mouse? No, I can probably do it this way. I don't know if you can see my pointer circling, but the center area right here is actually the existing parking lot that Dr. Fahey had mentioned, which unfortunately kind of becomes this, this mud puddle, this catch-all, if you will. Also, there's a, a real desire in college campuses to make a walking environment, not have a parking lot right in the center of your campus, not really the message you want to potentially show. So, we're looking at creating a gathering area, which would be a stamped asphalt, if you will, with pathways leading to this that would connect you and give you the ability to, to walk across the campus. And then in doing so, we're looking to push the parking to the outskirts, which is certainly important, getting the vehicles not to be seen. In most cases, we've looked at view corridors and being able to park buildings, or rather park vehicles and delivery trucks in areas that would be blocked by buildings. So, when you're in the center of the campus, you're really in a New England bucolic setting, lots of greenery trees around you, and then everything that would be, vehicular would be pushed to the, the outside. Do you want to show you one other image? Oh, thank you. Old guy with gray hair, you know. Yeah, actually, the next, yeah, the runnings would be great. Okay, so this is a little bit, let me zoom out a little bit, yeah, yeah, this is a little bit of the idea of what we're looking at for these buildings right now. They're very preliminary, kind of at a schematic level, but what you're looking at the top is a dining hall addition, very certainly attractive barn-like structure. The library expansion would take on the existing architecture of the library, replicate that. The new women's dorm, very similar to what's there right now in scale and size to the existing women's dorm. And then there's a view of this kind of space, if you will, between the two dorms with the, with the pergola and wrapping deck, and that's looking toward the, the campus with the new chapel. And I think, I want to lose the mic, but I think I could just point to-
There is a handheld mic behind you on that stand, if you want to walk around with one.
Maybe, yeah, why don't we just put this one up and I can point to these images here, so we don't have to be like, that's great. So, this is just an image of the, of the proposed quad with the new chapel and the library building. This is the chapel itself, an interior view, and then the back area of the chapel that you would see. So, again, these are up on your, on your screen here, but an idea of where we're, we're looking ahead. So, are there any questions about the plan, if you will, over the next probably decade or so? But, you know, if no questions, then we can, I'll turn this back over to Austin to talk a little bit about the, the actual engineering and what's being proposed.
So, the quad in the upper-left corner, that's where your parking lot is now that we're getting rid of?
That's correct.
If it's distracting that I don't look there, it's because there's a screen there, too.
Okay, good. I was going to say. I know you're not seeing it here.
No, it's right over your head, although sometimes I have to get in a position to see this, because that's small. But between your chart and that one, I've gotten able to see it. Certainly are lovely drawings, and it does, your description of it as being the bucolic New England, and you're, you know, obviously exactly right, it's very picturesque, as it will be completed eventually, so very cool. Comments or questions so far on what we've heard?
Very good.
My stuff is like- Is the boring engineering, but I'll, I'll try to make it sound as eloquent as Matt just did, so. Let's see. So, what, yeah, let's do it. Okay, so, as we mentioned, what we're doing here is relocating kind of the parking from being the focal point of the campus, and we're putting it on the perimeter, and it's been kind of strategically, strategically arranged. So, working in a clockwise fashion, starting at top center of the screen, you'll see, and the cursor for some reason doesn't want to show up, but... If I can find them. Yeah, I want that thing for a little bit.
Do all of your students stay in the dorms, or do you have commuter students, too?
We have some commuters, not many.
Okay.
I'd say the range is between five and ten. Okay. Principally residential.
For the benefit of anybody listening on a microphone, five or ten students principally. Even when you're not by the microphone, the folks at home can't get any kind of a sense of what you said, so I was just trying to repeat it a little bit. Austin?
Well, so can I just pick it up on that? So, just in terms of the, the new parking that's going to be contemplated here, or the kind of redistribution of the parking, if you will, is top center of the screen, you'll see there's a handful of spaces located there behind the administration building. There's going to be, as you're moving in a clockwise fashion, we're going to be putting in about, you know, a couple dozen spaces in there behind the library building, which currently is, is being utilized as parking, but it's kind of matted grass or packed gravel, and this will be a, a formalization of that. And then if you slide over, kind of just to the immediate left of where the dining's going to be, we're doing a formal parking there in front of them where the dormitory's going to be as well. We have spent a lot of time with Captain Manuelli and the fire department in arranging these, in arranging these parking and access configurations. There was some concern initially on their behalf that, you know, with the, the redistribution of the parking, that it was going to limit their, their access for emergency response. So, this parking and some of the features that are associated with it have, we spent a tremendous amount of time with Captain Manuelli and his team to make sure that he was comfortable with how this was being arranged, and that it wouldn't be inhibiting their ability to continue to serve the campus in the event that there was an emergency that needed responding. And with that came some of the access considerations, too. So, again, starting top center of the screen, what we're doing there, that driveway currently, it's, the cursor is so small, it doesn't show, but kind of right in that arrow, that is currently a, a full-site access driveway. By that, I mean, it accommodates both entering and exiting vehicles. We're going to convert that into an exit-only, so that'll become an exit-only driveway. And, and the circulation pattern, if you move to the immediate right on the screen, that driveway there is, is currently operating as in exit-only, I believe. We're going to convert that driveway into a full-access driveway. And then the circulation pattern, as you would be moving from right to left across the screen, that becomes a one-way circulation pattern through, and we, we designed that to be a little bit wider, perhaps have a gravel shoulder or something to accommodate, you know, a, a larger emergency response vehicle if needed, but still limit the amount of impervious surface and pavement that we were introducing to the campus. And then similarly, as you go into that lower, lower-left corner, that parking lot there would be a paved, so that's a new driveway onto Henry Clay. That, that does not exist today, but with the sole purpose of accommodating vehicles would be entering or exiting, and obviously the emergency response personnel who may hopefully don't need to access site, but in the event that they needed to, that would be there for them as well. As Matt mentioned, the interior of the campus would be including a series of walkways and pedestrian access points with the focal point on the center of the campus. And then with these improvements, what we've incorporated is a handful of stormwater management features as well around the perimeter, so we're going to have a basin immediately proximate to each one of these individual parking areas to, to just kind of handle and attenuate any stormwater runoff that may be generated as part of that. We've tried to maintain the bucolic setting that was described, so we're accommodating the, the stormwater runoff largely by way of surface drainage, you know, vegetated swales that we tried not to make feel too engineering, so it still kind of blends into the natural landscape of the campus, but still, you know, achieves the requisite stormwater performance standards that, that are here, and then also mimicking the hydrology of the site as it, as it exists today. So, we, we've included all the drainage calculations, which I believe are in the process of, of being peer-reviewed. From what I understand, the, the peer-review consultant that is employed by the town is a little bit delayed in their comments, but I, I don't, speaking a bit candidly, and although not objectively, I think this is fairly simple in terms of what we're, we're doing. It's, it's a handful of small parking lots that I don't, we're not reinventing engineering here, so it's, it's pretty straightforward in that regard. I'm, I'm happy to take a minute to answer any questions the board, the board may have.
Does anyone have any questions so far? Counsel Healy?
So, where the parking lot is going underneath the, what will be the men's dorm? How many spaces is that?
I'll find out here, I may get you the exact number here. Hang on a second. Good question. I believe, I believe so, yeah.
And that includes two, uh, up like, two accessible parking spaces as well.
Okay, and how many?
I didn't hear the answer, I'm sorry. How many?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I'll confirm that for you.
And how many students reside in that dormitory? Because it looks like it's connected, which is always handy when you're moving things.
Yeah, correct, twenty-one parking spaces there. I don't, I don't know how many specific students will be residing in that dorm. I think, you know, in terms of parking, I don't, and Dr. Fahey may be able to speak a bit to this, too, not every student who's here is going to be having a vehicle, you know, and they have parking passes that are customarily distributed to more upperclassmen, but I can't, you know, in, in some of our discussions with Dr. Fahey and, and other members of the college, there hasn't been a time where they've run out of parking passes. You know, frequently there are surplus parking passes, so the idea here is not to create some massive parking lot like up at UNH, but enough to accommodate staff and, and those folks who may have a-
Because what I'm thinking is right now, they kind of park where they want, on the grass or the dirt or the gravel. Now, you're going to have lined parking lot, so you'd need to make sure you have enough spaces to accommodate your student population.
It's, it's a, it's a very good point, and it's, it's a, it's a welcome- It's a very good point, and it's a welcome comment. I would suggest, when we arranged this master plan and number of parking, it was done in direct consultation and coordination with the college to make sure that we weren't going to be short parking, if you will. And then all of a sudden, people were trying to park on the lawn, or there wasn't enough spaces, so.
Yeah, they're going to park wherever they can.
Yeah, it's a welcome comment. I can assure you, we've spent a lot of time figuring this out to make sure we weren't all of a sudden going to be creating some operational mess, so.
And when you do put the new dorm in for the women, will that have a parking lot adjacent to that, or have you thought of that yet?
No. So, I can't manipulate this, but if you envision that, here we go. So, the parking lot that's here, to the south of, yeah, it doesn't matter. The parking lot you're looking at to the south of what in this plan is the reconceived men's dorm is currently the women's dorm. There's currently a dirt parking lot of that size now. It's not filled, right? We have the two existing dorms that you see there, each are approximately 45 students when at capacity. When we were at 95 students, that was the student parking lot. We never had a parking problem. The majority of our students are not even from New England. They don't bring cars with them. It's a pretty residential campus. So, the numbers here represent a, with the additional parking, which is rationalized behind the library, that's the one at about 1:00, which is compacted stone now. That has far more parking than we currently have, plus we have an additional guest parking, which is at about 12:00 at the very top. So, when we tried to work out the parking, we went off ratios of what we currently have, anticipating a little bit more with the expansion of the student body and probably a staff member or two. Yeah.
I suspect that your understanding of your students' needs is accurate as can be because of how long you've been there, and you've had a chance to observe all of those things and plan for them. Nevertheless, I suspect it will put you in a position of asking for a parking waiver when compared to our parking formulas. So, if so, be prepared to discuss that and understand what the justifications are for it.
Yep.
Because our formula will simply spit out a number of parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms, and you don't have 90 spaces, and nor do you need 90 spaces, but that's what the formula will spit out for you.
Sure, and we'll continue to work with Casey and staff, you know.
So, these new parking spaces are intended to be paved and striped and, you know, fully finished?
Correct, yeah, and obviously compliant with current accessibility standards as well.
Are the dorms, I know the new one will have to be, but is the old one ADA accessible?
I think they're both currently accessible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Okay, anything more that you'd like to include in the presentation, or?
I think that it covers, you know, some of the highlights, just as kind of a, what we're hoping to do is have this, you know, begin construction, provided the board was, you know, grants a presumptive approval, start construction probably late summer, I think, on some of these parking lot improvements, and minimize disruption to the campus when students return to the extent that we can. So, we're eager to get started. I know Casey and staff, pending receipt of the peer review, which we're hoping is going to be completed fairly expeditiously, is that we'd be in a position, you know, perhaps at the July hearing, or the 2nd July hearing, to have, having addressed those comments and working through some of the finer mechanics of a presumptive approval.
As you mentioned before, it's not exactly a sophisticated engineering project. There may not be a whole lot of.
I'm saying that as an engineer, so, yeah.
So, it may be pretty simple. I don't know when those comments are due back, or when the peer review is sent away. There's about another week before the deadline for the 1st July hearing, and then you mentioned the 2nd July hearing. If you're getting a determination at one of those, does that meet with the schedule that you're talking about in terms of starting construction? I don't see any obstacle to making those deadlines, if you can, if the peer review comes back in time for the staff to give us some review and analysis of it for July 6th. Not difficult for me to do my part of the job at that, at that speed. If the peer review takes a little longer, or the staff won't have it in time for them to really synthesize it for us, then maybe it's July 20th, but.
Yeah, and I think, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were contemplating a July 20th meeting, just given some of the prerequisites in terms of how long plans need to be provided in advance of a discussion. Having not received the peer review, I can turn things around fairly quickly. I mean, we did Executive Park, we were spinning things around fairly quickly. I can, I'll do the same here. I think July 20th as the kind of the end gating date for us would be okay. I wouldn't want to see it extend beyond that, if I can speak candidly, but I mean, as long as we get the peer review in a reasonable timeframe in advance of that, I'd feel comfortable. We could turn things around expeditiously.
You may well have the peer review in time to revise the plans for July 20th, rather than peer review, and we discuss it on July 6th and conditionally approve it based on some future changes. So, yeah, you, shouldn't be any difficulty making that timeframe. They have, our peer reviewers have 10 days from whenever the material and the fee is paid over to the engineering company, and I don't know where we are in that process. But if we've already begun that clock, you know, they'll have materials back in a week or something.
I think, Casey, I think the clock has started because the check arrived, right?
Yes, we received the check on June 9th and notified Boston O'Neill that we received that check that same day.
Okay, got it. So, then presumably we should be seeing comments within the next week or so, and I'd feel comfortable turning things around quickly.
Okay. So, the staff's memo has a little bit of discussion about completeness or completeness and then tabling it, and they're really focused on existing conditions plans, and I know that you've got three plans kind of at the end, which are, in a sense, existing conditions, but they've got a lot more on them with boundary and topo information, which kind of makes it hard to read as an existing conditions plan. What are your thoughts on all of that?
So, I'd be happy to provide kind of an overall existing conditions plan. I could have the surveyor provide that. That wouldn't, it's not going to fundamentally change the information. I think it makes it a bit easier to digest and review. I think, you know, me personally, I don't think that, it doesn't affect the completeness of the application. It's simply, it's not going to change the existing conditions. All of a sudden, there's not going to be a new building, or the topography won't change, but I'd be happy to have, as part of, you know, our supplemental filing presumably after peer review, or even in advance of that, an overall existing conditions I could prepare, and that wouldn't be complicated.
Does a determination that the application's complete tonight do anything functionally for you, or is there a benefit to that, or does it, usually it's simply just an administrative nothing that's along the process. But if there's, if it's meaningful for you to have it done tonight for some reason, I don't know, financing, or just being able to tell the world you're underway, or something, then let's talk about that and see what the board thinks of that.
I think there's a benefit in that regard, certainly, and if, yeah, I think there's a benefit in that regard, because, you know, it's, the college and the folks who are supporting it, you know, want to see that momentum, and that's really important to that. And I'd like, you know, personally and speaking on behalf of the college, I'd like to get that part of the completeness review going, so that we can engage public, public, you know, there doesn't look to be so many folks here, but I'd like to get that part of the process started, too, and then that enables us to get into the peer review, we're not having public comment being solicited at the, what I'd like to be, and again, being presumptuous, be in approval hearing when we get to the part of July.
Yep.
So, that's up to the board's preference, but our position is we very much appreciate an acceptance this night, tonight, if possible.
Yep. Well, let's talk through the acceptance, see what the board thinks of it. Ultimately, whatever decision that we wouldn't change what could be accomplished on July 20th, because we can do completeness and public hearing and final approval all at once, or all in one night. And I don't expect that you're going to have any abutters who are objecting to this. You're, I guess, more popular than a mosquito control business.
Yeah, a little bit.
Somewhat more appealing. So, you know, I don't think that you're going to have any abutters coming with things that, you know, are more than just questions that they'd want information on, if anything at all. And honestly, I wouldn't be surprised at all if you don't hear from any abutters, because it's a very appealing project visually, and it's not adding traffic or that sort of thing. However, what's the board's thoughts on completeness? I did talk with, talk to Tim about it. He had, he was looking for this idea of an existing conditions plan, but he did agree that that could be something that the application, that the applicant follows up on and sort of replaces or augments what we have, or replaces these ones in the back with an existing conditions plan that was more traditional for Tim's view. And so, I guess we have the choice or the option based on whatever we feel like. Tim's view of wanting that as a part of completeness is not a strongly held belief, I guess, is the way to say that. Thoughts, comments?
I have a question on.
Nelson?
I was reading through the recommendations from the staff. They mention in there, the applicant shall obtain all required state approvals, and it says, as part of one of the conditions is he's suggesting. And I didn't hear any mention of state approvals for any of this. I don't know that we need them, or what would that be?
It may be a standard condition. Are your parking lots totaling more than 100,000 square feet? Because if you are, that's an AOT.
Yeah, I'm familiar, no, no. The limited work that we're contemplating here does not trigger an AOT or DES review. I think that particular condition is probably a standard one that says, it's not incumbent on the town to determine if I need a state approval, and if I do, I have to go get it. But we don't, we're not anticipating any state requirements or approvals here. This is going to be locally jurisdictional.
Okay.
That'll turn your schedule upside down.
Yes, sir, and I'm, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they promise you 30 days review. Good luck with that. Does your change to the driveway plan affect any kind of DOT approvals or anything? Is it just changing the direction? Are you changing any dimensions on the driveways and the curb cuts and that sort of thing?
The driveways that we're contemplating here are local. There's no state involvement. We're going to be working with Dawn on that. Yeah, we've already been in communication with Dawn.
Yeah, he doesn't go on any state roads. They're on, they're town roads.
Yep.
Perfect, good. Casey, is that just a standard condition, that if they need any state permits, they got to get them, and that's?
Yeah, that's a cookie cutter condition that we put in all of our memos.
Okay. Okay.
If you don't need any, then you don't have to get any.
I'm out of jail now.
Nelson, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm ready to make a motion to, I think we want to accept this plan as complete as our application, and.
Okay, is there a second for Nelson's motion to find the application complete? Second by Councilor Healy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, 5-0-0 to find the application complete. And now, it's probably, are you asking for any waivers of our review?
We're going to be working with Casey on that. There were a couple of waivers that they thought we might need, but one of them, I think, was parking, right, Casey?
Yes, our memo didn't dive deep into their waiver requests, just because the review that we did last week was very preliminary.
Okay. I bet you probably are right that ultimately the parking, a number of parking spaces will be a waiver request, and maybe some other things as well.
And I believe, Casey, we constructed a waiver request as part of the initial application, just a matter of us.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, that's what we were asking. Yes, you did submit a waiver request.
I think we'll, if provided the board's amenable to that, we'll just continue to work with staff on making sure we're aligned in terms of the waiver requests that we're seeking.
That sounds good. Okay, so, let's address that on the 20th, when we consider the other things, and we've got the benefit of peer review and all of that.
Sure.
Since we've accepted it, I could at least say that we had a public hearing. If any interested abutters wish to weigh in, I don't see any. No, no, no. All right, close the public hearing. With that in mind, we know what we've got to accomplish between now and the 20th. Is there any other information that you need from us?
No, Casey, as soon as that peer review comes in, let me know, and we'll get right to responding to any comments that may be included there.
All right. Then the, is the board amenable to a motion to continue to July 20th with no further notice to abutters?
So moved.
So moved.
Some motion, there's a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. All right, thank you so much for the presentation. Beautiful college, beautiful presentation. Good to see you again.
Yeah, good to be here.
And I look forward to seeing you on the 20th with the information we would need to take final action. All right, item nine on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any items of concern they'd like to discuss? The only one that I would offer up, if anybody else has any, is that we do have a new member joining our board who has been approved by town council. We had to be sworn in, but we will soon have Jamie Von Schoen as a new member, and she's got a real estate and realtor background, among other things, and is very interested in the work we do and in contributing to the community. And so, one less empty chair around our nice table. Any other comments or updates on items? All right, then we are at item 10, which is the approval of the minutes of June 1, 2021. What is the will of the board? No thoughts?
Oh, okay, Mr. Jim, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. There are a few typos I won't go into, but.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Nelson, you want to give us your typos, or just send them to staff, or?
I don't know if I did them all. On page three, line 12, the word asked is misspelled. I'm not sure I even marked them all. I'm sorry, I'm afraid I can't follow. Oh, okay, let's see here.
Nelson, it might be easier for you to just circle the typos, and you can just physically hand it to me, just because I've already failed to follow along.
The problem is, I didn't circle them the first time I found them.
Whatever's easiest.
If we don't have any, then, you know, a typo isn't the worst sin in the world. Do you want to go through them, Nelson, or you want to just?
No, I just assumed.
All right. Anybody else have any comments on the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstaining? 4-0-1, two approve minutes? Fair enough?
Who seconded that?
Paul?
Okay, thank you.
That's it. That's everything on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much for good work, and turn your microphones off, and see you next time.